Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, colleagues. I'm going to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District's Board of Education. Item 4.1, the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Superintendent Aguilar.
Thank you. Please stand. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as Cecile Nunley would say if she was here someday, item 4.2, the broadcast statement. We will not have a reading by our student board member. Unfortunately, as you know, student board member Inge Olsen ended her time with us at the last board meeting after a remarkable year of contributions and really leading student voice and student advocacy throughout the Sacramento City Unified School District. So I will be reading the statement this evening. This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T Universe. Today's meeting, U-verse. Today's meeting will air Saturday, June 27th at 6:00 PM and Monday, June 29th at noon, and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Item 4.3, honoring exemplary service employees during COVID-19 school closures. And I have to say, I am so excited to have this item before us tonight because, as we know, this week we came close to 2 million meals served by our heroic nutrition services and have had incredible leadership at every level of our employees within SAC City Unified during these unprecedented and very difficult times. Superintendent, who will be presenting item 4.3?
President Ryan, let's skip through that one. We will come back to that one if possible, please.
Okay, no problem. Item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Yes, Madam President, three announcements, two of which I will make, followed by the superintendent's announcement. The first announcement I have is a special education settlement agreement, identified as 2020-030654. By a vote of 6 to 0, with the board president absent, the board approved that settlement. On the other special education settlement matter, identified as OEH case number 2020-040367, the board unanimously approved a special ed education settlement agreement. I will now defer to the superintendent for his announcement. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
You, President Ryan. I am pleased to announce that the board, by unanimous vote, approved the appointment of Andrea Egan as principal of CK McClellan High School. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Andrea. You've been an incredible leader within the district, and we're excited to see you continue to grow in your new leadership role at CKM. So with that, we have no more announcements of action taken in closed session. Item 6.0, agenda adoption. Do I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, please show a hand. I, okay, any opposed, any abstaining? None. The motion carries. Item 7.0, special presentation. This evening's special presentation will be on the coronavirus response update, a standing item through the COVID-19 crisis, presented by a team, including Christine Bada, Vincent Harris, Victoria Flores, Diana Flores, Doug Husher, Jennifer Kreshman, and Chad Schweitzer.
Thank you, President Ryan. I just want to open by saying that, of course, we had a more comprehensive update last week. This week, we're going to focus on a couple of items, including where we are at a very high level in terms of athletics. Also, where we're at, as in your background, SAC City Kids Connect, we have some good news related to that, and also just the general overview of things that have evolved since last week's update related to health and safety of our district community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our team.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. Good evening. My name's Doug Husher. I am the Assistant Superintendent for Student Support. For tonight's COVID-19 presentation, we will be sharing information about SAC City Kids Connect. That will be presented by Tumua, our Instructional Assistant Superintendent. Best practices for safety, as outlined by the CDC, California Department of Public Health, SAC County Public Health, will be presented by Victoria Flores. I will be providing a high-level look at our initial thinking around planning for a return to play for athletics. Victoria Flores, again, will be sharing information about our bug program at Luther Burbank. We can go to the next slide. And so, Ms. Loa, you can take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Husher. Good evening, Board President Ryan, members of the board, and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Tumua, and I serve as one of our Instructional Assistant Superintendents. And I'm here this evening to share an extremely important update. We are absolutely thrilled to share that our SAC City Kids Connect program, which provides free Wi-Fi for eligible families for up to six months, has been extended to December 31st at the deadline for our families. As we prepare for a fall reopening, this extension date is hugely helpful, given the unpredictability of the pandemic and its effect on our families. This extension will help us in our commitment to ensure access for all of our families who need the Wi-Fi support. As shared last week, families were either referred by staff as needing internet or self-reported as needing internet. We have worked hard, calling families to support them with this wonderful opportunity through our school site personnel and school principals. To recap the data that was shared last Thursday, 30% of our referred families have been offered personally by either their principal or their delegates, a unique code, and have been walked through the application process. Note that we are continuing to reach out to families who have expressed their desire to participate in our SAC City Kids Connect program. For example, this past week alone, since last Thursday, we've successfully provided three additional codes to three separate families, again, a testament to our commitment to supporting our families despite us being in summer break. 15% of our families referred have also informed us that they are already Internet Essentials customers, and 20% of our families reported have shared with us that they no longer need internet as they've acquired internet. And 45% of our families are still unreachable, which means we have not been successfully able to get through to them via phone call. So in our second phase of reaching out to our families, especially to take advantage of our December 31st deadline, we will include a tiered approach in partnership with our internal partners, with Mrs. Jennifer Kreshman and her team, and as well as with our face department. In some of my own personal calls that I've made, I have successfully connected with five families who have said they no longer need internet and was very appreciative of the offer. I connected with one mother this morning, in fact, who had reached out via web form and was extremely grateful for the unique code, as well as my ability to walk her through applying for the offer. We continue to make every effort possible with all of our partners, internally and externally, to close the loop and assure our families have the access they need for fall. And again, I want to emphasize to all of our families listening this evening that if you are interested and need and would like to take an opportunity, take advantage of this opportunity, please visit our website at www.scusd.edu. And thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Victoria Flores to discuss our health guidelines.
Good evening, everyone. And Victoria Flores, I serve as your Director of Student Support and Health Services. And tonight, I'm going to speak about the health guidelines for opening schools, provided by our federal, our state, and our local agencies. And this is just a really high-level overview of what opening schools will look like. Of course, we're still in Phase 1, as we talked about that research and looking at all of the guidelines. And of course, we will be meeting with our labor partners to discuss all of this, as well as continuing to engage our community and get their feedback. So we've been working really hard to compare and align the guidance by the Centers for Disease Control. I apologize for all the word salad, but it's a lot of titles. The California Department of Public Health, California Department of Education, our local Sacramento County Public Health, and of course, our local education agency, Sacramento County Office of Education. And so, you know, these are the standard practices throughout these documents, and many you're going to see we regularly employ in schools and really try to stress. So the first one they talk about is this concept of physical distancing. We might hear it called social distancing a lot, not a huge fan of that because socially we want to stay connected to each other, but a little bit more space. And this is actually one of the best ways that we can protect ourselves is through this physical distancing. You think our typical kind of space puzzle bubble is about three feet? We need to double our bubble right now. I think this is a phrase I've heard in Canada, to typically around six feet. So that's one of our best practices. Of course, washing our hands and hand sanitizer, this is a standard health practice that every cold and flu season, we really work hard to reinforce. And we really need to make this part of our routine and our rituals in our classrooms and throughout our day, particularly talking about before we eat, and we might, you know, come into contact with our mouth, and after recess, after we've touched, lots of stuff. Of course, we've seen lots of articles and media recently about the use of face cloth coverings. California Department of Public Health did issue, you know, a new mandate, basically saying that now, you know, we are required by our state when we are in the public or working with the public to wear that facial covering. There are exceptions, of course, particularly for people with hearing difficulties that might need to read lips, breathing difficulties, children under 2. We always want to be mindful of our most vulnerable community members. And then this is especially important when that six feet of physical distancing is difficult to maintain. So think about the grocery store in the aisle. We're doing our best to be mindful of people, and you come around that corner, and there you are, and you're finding yourself, you know, within distance or Costco, right? And this is where it's important to wear that mask. Next slide, please. And of course, promoting respiratory hygiene. Again, this is something we do standard every year, coughing and sneezing into that elbow or using facial tissue. So this becomes really important as well. Screening for symptoms, you know, this is a standard practice that we ask all of our staff and our families to employ, really being careful to stay home when they're sick, particularly if they have a fever or gastrointestinal symptoms. That's always been a part of our practice. So it's particularly important right now, and the CDC has some really lovely guidelines about this. And then, of course, that stay home if you're sick. This one has changed at least twice that our lead nurse and I can recall, but it might have been more. And it's likely to change again. So we put that little bullet, "subject to change," as revised by CDC. Right now, what they're advising is that if you're sick, once you're well, you need to stay home for three full days before you come back. So those of us that have, you know, have children or care for other people know your child might be sick three, four, or five days. Now we're going to have to add on three more to that. And then this one's really, really important. Stay home if you're told to quarantine or isolate due to COVID-19. This is really important for our community, that they understand what quarantine means and really follow that guidance. And Sacramento County Public Health and your doctor's offices will let you know what that means. And this is just really for the health and safety of all of us. Next slide, please. So we wanted to share a little example of how we're hoping to support our community in learning all these new health behaviors. So this was a free social story that we found on a website, was created by a speech and language therapist. And one of our amazing school nurses, Susan Civils, figured out how to put it on YouTube and narrate it with her lovely voice. So we're so grateful to her for sharing her talent, and we hope you enjoy this sweet moment of how we can be safer together. Please go ahead and play it.
Masks. Masks come in all different colors. Wearing a mask helps prevent us from spreading germs. Wearing a mask might feel uncomfortable at first. When I put on my mask, I should make sure it is covering my nose and mouth. Wearing a mask to school. A story by Tara Tuchel. My school wants kids and adults to wear masks. Masks come in all different colors. Wearing a mask helps prevent us from spreading germs. Wearing a mask might feel uncomfortable at first. When I put on my mask, I should make sure it is covering my nose and mouth. Some masks have elastic that loops around a person's ears, and some tie in the back. Even though I am wearing a mask, I can still have fun at school. I can ask my teacher if I need help with my mask. Wearing a mask at school is different. I can handle this change. We all hope that coronavirus goes away soon, and we won't need to wear masks for much longer.
So we hope you enjoyed that sweet, cute moment to help our, especially our youngest children, really understand all these new health measures. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Doug.
Thank you, Victoria. And so for our athletics update tonight, we're going to provide a high-level look at returning to play. And we understand the importance of athletics when it comes to students' physical, emotional, and social well-being. That being said, we must acknowledge that the health of our students, our staff, our community are paramount in any decisions that we make. All decisions regarding restarting our athletic programs will be based on approval provided by the Sacramento County Public Health Office. SCUSD has been working with other districts in a series of meetings called the Cross-District Athletic Collaborative. This effort has been led by Natomas Unified Superintendent Chris Evans, and it's included in Natomas Unified San Juan, Twin Rivers, Oak Grove, and several other districts. The aim of the collaborative is to begin conversations around each district creating a plan to reintroduce athletic play based on a multi-phased approach. Each phase would be under the guidance and direction of SAC County Public Health. The consistent theme here has been to provide support to one another as districts begin considering how they can reconnect coaches and students in a safe manner. Next slide, please. Here in SCUSD, we are still in the information gathering stage. We are looking at sample plans, developing ideas, and looking forward to dialogue with various partners in the work. We do have a number of models to draw upon, including reintroduction to play guidance provided by the California Interscholastic Federation, or CIF, the National Federation of State High School Association, and most recently, conditioning for sports guidance that was released from the Sacramento Environmental Management Department. Most of the models provide for a multi-phased approach, consistent of three or four phases or stages. Phase 1 is usually just conditioning. Some considerations that would have to be made at this phase usually includes things like physical distancing, access to campus, cleaning, screening of students, training for adults, et cetera. In the second phase, many models call for reintroduction of equipment with additional considerations. The final stages often resume athletic competition under the approval from SAC County Public Health. I want to reiterate that we are still in our planning stages. We will be working with our partners to build out these next steps. There will be extensive health precautions taken into account before we begin any athletic programming. Again, the health of our students, our employees, our community is the most important thing here. So no play will move forward without the approval of local health officials. Any resumption of activity will follow state, county, and any other pertinent health orders and/or recommendations. We look forward to providing updates as more information becomes available. We will also mark July 20th on our calendars as an important date. On July 20th, CIF will provide an update regarding scheduling for fall competition. We are not clear at this time what will happen, but there is certainly a possibility that the scheduling of fall competition may be pushed back into later in the school year. I'm going to turn it back over to Victoria, who's now going to share a little bit about the bug program at Burbank and the health protocols that we will put in place to ensure the safety of that program.
And so we just wanted to share that, you know, as we look to athletics, we also have gotten some requests for some other programming. So, you know, much appreciation goes to Todd McPherson, who's the urban agriculture instructor and coordinator of the bug program at Luther Burbank High School. And he reached out to us and really provided us with lots of really great thoughts about how we could safely get the students back into the garden. And so, you know, of course, he's looking at following all of the directives that have been provided, particularly on group size, and making sure that students would be co-horted. All the gardening is outdoors, and we know that that's actually one of the safest places that we can be in space with each other is outside. So of course, they're looking at following all those standard health precautions. You know, he's really looking at keeping the garden healthy as well. They produce a ton of, you know, vegetables and things for the community, and so he'd really like to make sure they get in there. But also, this really allows for our students to safely engage in some positive and healthy and truly healing outdoor activities. And I think that's probably one of the most important aspects, as well as the health and healing of the garden. Of course, if you've ever been out there, it's a beautiful space, educational green space for everyone. Next slide, please. And so we're really looking at how do we balance these social-emotional needs of our community with the public health needs and safety. And so one of the things we're hoping is that by working with these programs, we can practice these new behaviors for returning to school. They might even help inform our procedures. You know, we think it looks good on paper and in practice, but in process, it might be different. And so we're really hopeful we can work with him. And lastly, I just want to say, we urge the community to lean into all these new normals to create a physically and healthy, emotionally safe space for everyone, particularly as our community is experiencing this uptick, this surge in cases. Today, right before the board meeting, I read that there are 50 people in the hospital today with COVID-19. So I ask you to join me in sending your positive healing thoughts to all those right now who are struggling. Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you to the entire team for your wonderful work in these very challenging times. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, President Ryan, we do. We have three public comments.
And I know that you're still recovering from the last marathon board meeting. We appreciate you reading these comments.
The first is from Renee Webster-Hawkins, and says, "I want to applaud..." And she says, "I want to applaud the leadership and sophistication of the superintendent, the chief academic officer, and the many other dedicated central office and site-level administration teachers and staff pushing the Sisyphus rock up the hill. In the last 13 weeks, these heroes shifted instruction and social-emotional support and nutrition services from 70 school sites to 40,000 homes, where highly vulnerable students and their families are sheltering against the coronavirus. To be clear, I can't say with confidence that distance, quote, "learning" occurred for many of these students, but most teachers worked hard to connect, to engage, and to support their students in this unprecedented crisis. All this with no thanks to the SCTA, which has stood in the way, pushing the Sisyphus rock back down the hill with all of its entitled lobbying power, and stuck in 2017 as if the pandemic and uprising against racial injustice never happened. What planet is the leadership of that lobbying organization living on? Why would they belittle and file grievances against principals whom the union claims were, quote, "overzealous," unquote, for encouraging teachers to fully participate in the implicit bias training and universal design for learning curriculum offered by the district? The district was one of the first in the state to offer this UDL curriculum to all of our teachers within just 18 days of the school shutdown. And the curriculum has since been applauded by the California Department of Education as a best practice for all schools in the state. Yet the union wants to cascade the district and site principals for suggesting that teachers improve their teaching practices from engaging in it. It is unconscionable that now, during the pandemic, the racial justice crisis and the greatest recession." The next comment is from Allison French-Tubow, and says, "Unfortunately, I can't make a responsive comment to this item because no details are available in the agenda packet, and I am required to submit comment six hours in advance of the meeting starting. This is not an acceptable public engagement and comment process." And the next comment is from Angie Sutherland, Angel Garcia, Grace Trahio, Katie Connor. "We have a group comment for Coalition for Students with Disabilities. Dear President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board, on behalf of the Coalition for Students with Disabilities, we know the distance learning experience in SCUSD this year had very loose parameters. In preparing for students to start up school again in the fall, the district's plan is in development, and they are seeking input from stakeholders. We ask you to create more structure and rules in a timely manner around teaching and learning so students can count on having a live teacher every day to provide a quality education. Going forward, the Coalition is confident that SCUSD and the school board will make sure students' needs come first." And that's the last public comment.
Thank you. And moving on to item 8.0, public comment. In opening up the public comment, I do want to share a few things. We have been receiving some excellent feedback from parents and community members in the field. I think we thought, as a board, it was extremely important that we create the space, even if it meant that we were here until 2:00 AM, to hear the voices of all of our community at the last board meeting. We also recognize that board policy says that we shall not exceed a total time for public comment on each agenda item in 15 minutes in length. So one of the things that the district sought to do this time was to make sure that each and every public comment that was submitted be posted online and archived and recorded in the record. And so for the first time, we actually have all of our written public comments, both provided to the board for review in advance of the board meeting, and posted online to be a part of the public record on our items this evening. Now, I think you know, as we go into our public comments, that we made a commitment that the extension of the SRO contract would not be considered as part of the adopted budget tonight. And so you will see a budget discussion that reflects that commitment. But I do want to also say that we will continue to be on the reading of public comments up to 30 minutes per item this evening, refine our process to ensure it is more inclusive, that it creates an opportunity for real-time engagement from our parents, students, and community stakeholder groups. And so we will be coming back in July for a board meeting, rather than take a hiatus that month, as often is the case. And we're hoping that by the time we come back, we'll have an even better process that allows for real-time submission of public comments and- and the voices of our communities to be heard versus written comments submitted in the archive or read by Ann Moretti, despite her phenomenal and heroic efforts to be able to read each and every single public comment at the last board meeting. So with that, we will take public comments on all non-agendized items, item 8.0. And do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have 25 public comments. There were many that went under 10.3, under the budget item, as we did at the last board meeting.
Okay, so. So Ann, what we'll do then is we will have one minute per public comment for these 25 non-agendized items. Once again, this is recorded and archived online for the first time, and each board member has received. And I have in front of me a printed copy of all of the public comments that were submitted.
Okay, the first public comment is from, comments from David Fisher of SCTA.
Ms. Moretti. Ms. Moretti, President Ryan, if I can just interject very quickly and just remind our community that if any of the public comments are cut short because of the time limit, they can visit our website now, where they can see the entirety of each of the public comments by agenda area. So if you go to our website and you click on the board agenda, you will see, for example, right now, under 8.0, those 25 public comments.
Okay, thank you very much for reiterating that, Superintendent Aguilar.
Superintendent and President Ryan, it was my understanding that this first comments from SCTA would receive the 15 minutes. Is that correct? Or?
That is correct. SCTA is invoking the collective bargaining agreement, which allows them up to 15 minutes to present traditionally at the first board meeting of the month. But for the last couple of months, they have used the 15 minutes for both board meetings.
Thank you. So the comments from David Fisher say, "Good evening. I'm David Fisher, the president of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. On Tuesday, June 23rd, we met with representatives from SEUSD to discuss reopening schools, the contract, and the status of the SEUSD budget. Despite repeated statements that these negotiations were among the most important issues impacting the district, neither Superintendent Aguilar nor Board President Ryan participated in the negotiations. It's also important to note that the negotiations occur in history of bad faith bargaining on behalf of the district. Just yesterday, in fact, the California Public Employment Relations Board issued another complaint against SEUSD, the seventh in the last two years. This complaint relates to the district's bad faith bargaining around the implementation of district learning. Herb's complaint makes an initial determination that, among other things, SEUSD's bargaining team, quote, "lacked the authority to bargain as they were repeatedly countermanded by Superintendent Jorge A. Aguilar, who had declined to participate in actual negotiations, resulting in SEUSD", that's in parentheses, "contradicting and backtracking from proposals", unquote, "related to district learning", and that, quote, in parentheses, "SEUSD", unparentheses, "provided", in parentheses, "SCTA", and parentheses, "with incorrect information and misrepresented the basis for its bargaining positions as when", in parentheses, "SEUSD rejected", in parentheses, "SCTA's proposal to protect day-to-day substitute pay on the grounds that it needed these monies to purchase laptops for students, even though this was not true", end quote. And that, quote, in parentheses, "SEUSD implemented its district distance learning program", end parentheses, "without having negotiated with", parentheses, "SCTA", end parentheses, "to agreement or through the exhaustion of the impasse procedures and bargaining regressively", end quote. The SEUSD budget, we shared the vastly improved news with the district about the California budget, which, as expected, reversed the major cuts to K-12 education, first advanced by Governor Newsom in his May revise. Unfortunately, unless there has been a last-minute change, the SEUSD budget for 2020 to 21, which is set to be approved by this school board, is based on the draconian cuts contained in the May revise and continues a practice under this leadership to greatly exaggerate the district's fiscal challenges while papering over the district's fiscal mismanagement. The district's representative did not know when the district intended to revise its 2020 to 21 budget based on the new and vastly improved California budget. Included as part of the state's budget is a provision that prevents layoffs for certificated staff for the 2020 to 21 school year. Certain classified staff, custodians, food service, and transportation are also exempt from layoffs. Administrators, however, are specifically not exempted from being laid off. Reopening schools. Although the official start of classes in SEUSD is September 3rd, two schools in the district have an earlier start date, New Joseph Bonheim on August 3rd and New Tech High School on August 17th. Our discussion with the district was generally positive and constructive, but we were disappointed that the district did not have an actual proposal to discuss regarding the reopening of schools. The district acknowledged that it's not sure when it will have a proposal to make. Prior to the meeting, in his June 15th letter to SCTA, Superintendent Aguilar committed that the district would, quote, "specifically discuss options related to reopening our district schools with an early start date. This will also allow us the opportunity to hear any questions that SCTA has about reopening schools and for the district to share information that it has around reopening schools", end quote. We were encouraged by the district agreeing with the following overriding goal contained in the CDE guidebook, quote, "The health and safety of students and staff is the top priority when making the decision to physically reopen school campuses for use by students, staff, and others", end quote. District representatives acknowledged the challenge of providing education to students who may not be able to attend in-person classes, as well as the substantial number of educators who may be at high risk, which means that a distance learning-only option is likely to be provided. District representatives said they were still working on the various hybrid models it wants us to consider, in addition to the numerous health and safety concerns related to considering the resumption of in-person classes. Towards that end, we gave the district a health and safety proposal that addresses ongoing concerns, including alternative assignments for staff who are in high-risk categories or who have family members who are in high-risk categories. Our proposal also called for the immediate hiring of school nurses at the nationally recommended one-nurse-to-750-student ratio, in contrast to the current workload of one nurse for approximately 3,200 students. Over the next few days, we will be putting together a membership survey to solicit input about various ideas about reopening schools, and we strongly encourage the district to conduct its own survey among parents and students and the greater SEUSD community that encourages honest feedback and an opportunity for real input regarding the reopening of schools. No responses to our previous proposals. The district also had no response to our previous proposals and provided no date when it expected to be able to provide one. Our proposals included the following. Mandatory implicit bias training. A necessary first step is mandatory implicit bias training for all SEUSD staff. In 2014, the SEUSD school board passed a new policy mandating this training, but the district has not implemented it. This is included as part of our restorative practices proposal. Restorative practices as an alternative to punitive discipline. SEUSD has the highest rate of school suspensions for African-Americans in California. The only way to change is to actively develop alternatives to suspensions, expulsions, and more punitive means of student discipline in the form of restorative practices. Our proposal was developed with a Black Parallel School Board and was first proposed in March 2018. African-American literature in our schools. All students, not just students from African-American families, should be exposed to books and images that tell the story of African-Americans, along with the stories of other citizens from diverse racial, religious, and ethnic backgrounds. As a start, SCTA has proposed that each school be provided with $2,000 to buy books on Black heroes and historical figures for inclusion in school libraries and classrooms. We also proposed using a portion of health plan savings to pay for the educational materials. Because our district lacks librarians, especially at the elementary school level, who can help guide young readers, these books must be made readily available and accessible. Multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. Together with restorative practices, we have proposed that SEUSD implement multi-tiered systems of support. This approach is grounded in a robust early education intervention system that provides additional instructional and behavioral support to curtail the misidentification of special needs students. Too many Black and minority students are written off or improperly placed in special education settings when the help of a specialist or tutor would keep them on the same trajectory as their peers. Use savings from the terminated contract with the Sacramento Police Department to get students the support services they need in an effort to break the school-to-prison pipeline. We continue to advocate that SEUSD terminate its multimillion-dollar contract, but, in parentheses, "budgeted over three years", with the Sacramento City Police Department to provide school resource officers, SROs. We proposed that the dollars saved be used to hire additional school psychologists, social workers, counselors, and nurses to provide much-needed mental and physical health support for students. This was a recommendation of the SEUSD African-American Achievement Task Force, which included SCTA's second vice president, Hassan McWhorter, but until recently has been rejected by the SEUSD school board. The school board is now expected to cancel the contract. Using health plan savings to allow for social distancing requirement and save schools for students during the pandemic. Recently, both SCOE and the California Department of Education have issued guidance on how schools might reopen in the fall. There is general consensus that in whatever form the reopening takes, it will require significant additional resources to apply social distancing standards in the educational setting. As a gesture of good faith, together with SEIU Local 1021, we gave a proposal to SEUSD to use health plan savings in 202021 to address, quote, "costs associated with social distancing requirements that could result in severely reduced class sizes, staggered schedules, or hybrid learning models, nurses to monitor student health, trained professionals to address students' mental health needs exacerbated by the pandemic, the purchase of personal protective equipment, PPE, for staff and students, and increased cleaning costs to allow for thorough disinfection of school sites", unquote. With SEIU, we represented 95% of SEUSD employees. In 2021 to 22, and assuming that classes return to a more traditional setting, savings would then be used to lower class sizes and improve services to students, according to the agreement we reached with SEUSD in 2017. The district has had our proposals since June 9th and still has not provided a response, including on our proposal regarding health plan changes and savings that looked at an August 1st goal for making health plan changes. Once again, the district's rhetoric regarding the urgent need to work together doesn't match its actions of obstruction and obfuscation. And this now includes working together to ensure that classes can resume in the safest manner possible this fall. We expect to have a follow-up meeting after the district has had a chance to develop a written proposal. The next public comment is from Sarah Williams Kingsley and says, and she says, "This is a response to the Sacramento City Teachers Association proposed title, quote, 'Article on Whole Child Education', dated June 9th, 2020. I object to the SCTA's efforts in this article to override district staff and the elected school board by putting in place committees to determine what education is offered to our students on a site-by-site basis. This approach basically makes each site its own governing board, a governing body in violation of the intent of a school district with an elected board to provide oversight. It reinforces the existing opt-in culture that permeates our district and holds back improvement efforts. It reinforces inequity. It violates students' rights to a free, appropriate public education. I want to be clear with the board that should you agree to this proposal, you will be taking steps backwards in the fight for progress for our students." And the next public comment is from Maricar Helmer. And it says, "As you know, every year, there are a number of teaching positions that are vacant for more than 30 days. When senior retired teachers with full credentials do not or cannot take these assignments, students suffer a rotation of substitutes holding emergency 30-day substitute and teaching permit. As the COVID health crisis continues, a substantial number of senior retired teachers serving as substitutes may not be able to work. This is to request the board, in coordination with the superintendent and his staff, accept review and facilitate my application for a 60-day CTC Emergency Career Substitute Teaching Permit. The CTC requires three years of consecutive substitute teaching with the district for at least 90 days per year. I have exceeded that with 330 days. The application form simply requires the superintendent's signature and support. Unfortunately, my recent submission to Human Resources resulted in various replies." The next comment is from Daniel Richer and says, "Hello, board members. I would like to request publication and announcement of publication of the public comments submitted to the board prior to the June 18 and June 25th board meetings. Please advise whether and when this will be done or whether it will not be done. Thank you." The next comment is from Renee Phillips. And it says, "Rename Sutter Middle School. Racist symbols are not the pride of the city. My siblings and I attended Sutter Middle School. Its location in a predominantly white East Sacramento neighborhood, coupled with the disproportionate under-representation of Black and Brown kids perpetuates the racist symbolism of its namesake. As a former student and SEUSD graduate, I demand change. Our generation will not stand for this any longer. Start with Sutter and then research each and every school named after an individual, including Peter Burnett and Kit Carson. If they have any type of racist, oppressive, or questionable history, intentionally strip their names from public view. Our community and children deserve better. Equity is in our actions, not just our mission and vision statement. Simply put, in the mid-19th century..." The next comment is from Emily Mizokami and says, "I am requesting that the board form a community advisory committee to address the issue of renaming Sutter Middle School. I have collected over 1,000 signatures in support of renaming the school. I would be happy to serve on this committee. I have also raised nearly $500 to help pay for new signage and uniforms. Thank you." The next comment is from Hallie Burrows and says, "I would like to request that the board form a committee advisory committee in order to rename Sutter Middle School. It is significant to the community to have a school that gets a lot of focus to carry a name that accurately represents community values. Thank you." The next comment is from Jennifer Stoddard, and it says, "Rename Sutter Middle School." And the next comment is from Audrey Robbins and says, "A community advisory committee needs to be formed to rename Sutter Middle School. The name is a glaring lesion on our district and frankly, and is frankly embarrassing." The next comment is from Cora Spiek and says, "John Sutter was a colonizer. He settled on my walkland. To keep a school named after him carries weight. The school board can no longer claim they were, quote, "unaware of his actions", unquote, "if we are now giving you the facts of the dark history he created. If the district refuses to rename, it says that they are willing to keep revering a man who committed crimes against native peoples and the land that belongs to them. To rename is to say that the district isn't forgetting history, as you can remember with..." as you can remember with commemorating, but that SUSD stands with native communities and is willing to make visible change in reversing the colonial and racist society that John Sutter created and that is still being perpetuated. I stand with Emily Mizokami in renaming Sutter Middle School, and I implore SUSD to do the same." And the next comment is from Mo Kashmiri and says, "Both parents and students at Sutter Middle School started petitions to change the name of Sutter Middle School. One of those petitions already has over 1,000 signatures on it." And it gives the website link. "As one of many steps that the district should take to become an anti-racist district, I urge that a committee be formed to change the name of Sutter Middle School. Unfortunately, Sutter was a racist colonizer who prospered on the backs of enslaved indigenous people of California. It is shameful that our children are expected to express pride in association with a man who terrorized so many. The statue is gone, and it is time for us to embrace a more positive name for this school. There are so many community role models who do good work that could be honored by the renaming of this school. We know there would be costs to change the name, which is why Sutter parent..." The next comment is from Alina Cervantes and says, "First priority, we need a plan for fall now. There needs to be a requirement that teachers are prepared to teach online and use Google Classroom in the fall in case of future shutdowns. There will be no excuse this time for not being prepared. Doing nothing more than emailing assignments is not acceptable for fall. Refusing to use the district's platform of Google Classroom should not be an option. Our children cannot afford to miss more days of instruction. Parents also need to plan ahead. We can't wait until a couple of weeks before school for a decision to be made. Second priority, if you are calling for an end to police, union money, and city council and school board elections but are dead silent on teachers' union money, you are either a hypocrite or your eyes are still closed, particularly those of you who sit on this board and know the game. It's time to get SCTA money out of school for graces." This comment is from Michelle Sweets and says, "Teachers' unions used to be about ensuring fair labor practices for educators. Now they are about influencing politics and making money. We need organizations that are here for kids, not adults. A union that's focused on its own best interest isn't one that's focused on children and learning. I request that SUSD ban campaign contributions from teachers' unions for board elections to ensure fair and unbiased elections." And the next comment is from Richard Vasquez and says, "Good evening, Board President Ryan Superintendent Aguilar and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to submit public comment. This process sucks, and length of my comment submitted will not be read. Please look to improve the process. I would like to express my appreciation for Principal Kirkland of Hiram Johnson. Thank you for bringing in someone that is willing to do the next-level things/efforts that truly get results for the most needed help families. He is on his campus day in, day out, all day, all night. He is available. Many don't understand that is part of getting positive outcomes. He has shown he is going to do the work and put in the time. He does lead by example. I am thankful, grateful, nothing but positives. He does his job. He is there for his family, students. Johnson needed a leader, and we finally got one. It has been a tough year, and we got a lot of work to do at Johnson." The next comment is from Rebecca Gross and it says, "Hi there, me again. Two weeks ago, after many meetings during which board members and Superintendent Aguilar told us they valued the parent participation preschool and implied they just didn't value it enough to fund it, parents and teachers were told that we had two weeks to reach full enrollment with drastically increased fees and little information about what school will look like in the fall. It is my sense that this was a tactic to put all of the responsibility on parents for an administration failure, so that when we failed to reach full enrollment, the board could cut the program guilt-free. For those not involved in the meetings, the task was to get 250-plus families to pay to receive a spot that was, one, not guaranteed unless we got enough families to enroll, and, two, in a program that could be drastically altered by COVID restrictions, and none of the COVID restriction details would be available until much later." The next comment is from Laura Santos and says, "I have been involved with the Parent Participation Preschool Program for over 40 years. This program is more important than ever, given the need for quality preschool education. Please do everything possible to continue this program. Thank you." Next comment is from Brooke Pigno and says, "I wanted to write again to show my full support for the district's parent participation preschool and my desire to see it continue. We, like many families, do not qualify for preschool yet. We don't make enough money to pay for a large majority of private preschool programs. I called and priced many, and we can afford one of the nine if we get help from family. However, because it's so late in the year, there are zero spots open, and we would be on a waitlist at best. I know this is a difficult time with all of the considerations for COVID-19, but the sudden discontinuation of this program would be absolutely devastating to our family and many others. It is literally our only option. We have already agreed to double the fee, which is something that will stretch our budget beyond what we can reasonably handle. But we are willing to try because this program means so much to us. We will continue to fight for our program no matter what." Next comment is from Amanda Haig and says, "Discontinuing the parent participation preschool program would be an utter failure to families of SUSD for decades to come. We need as much parent involvement and investment in the bettering of this district as possible. Do the right thing and keep it going." The next comment is from Julian Mack and says, "I am writing to speak on behalf of the Parent Participation Preschool, specifically the Edward Kelly site. We, as parents and the teachers, have jumped through every hoop you have asked of us. Even after I gave a deposit, you still wanted more emails. We are supporting the program. You are putting up roadblocks and not supporting your teachers or your students. I understand the challenging times we are all facing. Please don't make it more challenging. We are ready and excited for next year. Please let us move on, knowing our students will have a place to receive an education next year. Please support the continuation of the parent participation preschool program. Thank you." The next comment is from Alejandro Radillo and says, "Hello, Factory Direct Housing has reached out to the Sacramento City Unified School District multiple times, over six voicemails, in addition to four email inquiries, and we have yet to receive a response. Our customer, Stephen Lai, is waiting for the school district to respond to the matter of paying school fees for the new housing construction we are managing. Stephen Lai cannot receive the issuance of a building permit until he pays the school fees to SUSD. Without a building permit, the project is at a halt and pushing back the completion deadline nearing an impossible turnaround time that can leave him homeless. The Sacramento City Unified School District must respond and advise how Stephen Lai can complete the required school fee payment for factory-direct housing to finish building his home." The next comment is from Matt Mueller and says, "My name is Matt Mueller, and I am the parent of two 15-year-old twin sons, one of whom is autistic. My wife works as a special needs classroom aide. My autistic son also has an assigned aide. I am very dismayed over the state's proposed elimination of funding for aides. Aides are essential for both the teachers as well as the students, especially special needs students and for teachers of special needs classrooms. This cannot happen. My autistic son will be attending his first year of high school next year, and this will be a huge change for him. He will not be able to function without the help of an aide. The students in the special needs classroom where my wife serves as an aide rely heavily on her, as does the teacher. Eliminating these aide positions will be extremely detrimental to the education of these children. This cannot happen. Something has to be done to prevent this." Thank you. The next comment is from Rhonda Mueller and says, "Hi, my name is Rhonda Mueller. I'm a classroom aide in SDC at Albert Einstein. My son is ASD and will be starting at Rosemont High and has an aide because he needs one to continue his education. I cannot comprehend the reason for cutting aides. Special needs students must have this support, as well as teachers. With all the changes, you think these students can go without? Have you even considered special need classes? Please think this through and speak with those that will be affected before passing this budget. My job is necessary to the education and well-being that you owe these students. Put them first." And the next comment is, and last comment, is from Kim Stovall. And it says, "Please don't cut aides from the education budget. Aides are an imperative part of our school fight team, supporting teachers, students, staff, and parents through the educational journey." That's the last public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Moretti. Before we move on to the next item, I know we have discussed some of the other public comment items in the past. I do want to say that we've had multiple requests from board members, including myself, Board Member Morowski, and Board Member Minnick, to look at the renaming of schools under an anti-racist framework. And so we're currently pulling board policies and ed code, and we'll be bringing those forward so that we can look not just at Sutter but at multiple school sites. That should be considered in the potential of renaming. So we're moving on to item 9.1, Public Hearing. This will be the public hearing of the 2020-2021 Annual Budget Plan and Annual Service Plan, this evening being presented by Christine Beta and Becky Bryant.
Hi, good evening, Board President Ryan Superintendent Aguilar and board members. Tonight, we are here to share with you the Special Education Local Plan for the SALPA Annual Budget and Service Plan for 2020-2021. This is a statutory requirement that we must do in a prospective manner by June 30th of the school year for the next school year. This plan certifies that our LEA and SALPA will provide a full continuum of services to all eligible students with disabilities within the SALPA. It also requires a public hearing prior to the adoption of the plan, and that's why we're here tonight. Next slide, please. So really, one of the most important things in this presentation that we would like you to take away is that our students are first and foremost general education students. And they may qualify for a variety of services, but those services are always to enable them to participate in the greatest extent possible in the general education program. And so we see them as general education students first, and as the SALPA, we would like the district to also have that same focus. This plan is our ongoing commitment to provide our services and allocate our resources appropriately for the next school year. So some facts about special education. Our official count was taken on October 1st this year, and we had 6,217 students. That's actually a decrease of 367 students from last year. However, the count was taken exactly two months earlier than it typically would have been in our old reporting system. So we believe that that difference in the count was more about the time of year it was taken, not the actual students. As I look at how we finished the year, we're finishing with right around the same amount of students, or about 100 students more. In terms of our students, we have 62% of the students that we serve have language, speech and language needs or specific learning disability. To drill down a little farther, the federal criteria has all of these different disabling conditions for which a student could qualify for special education services. And so this is the disaggregation of our data. So for example, we have students who have intellectual disability. And so in October, we had 232 students who qualified under that category. Now, a student may qualify under any of these categories and be eligible for special education, but that no means determines where they are educated or how they are educated. Their services are driven by their IEP, and this is simply a classification for reporting for how students are qualified. Next slide, please. So currently, we have speech and language services on all of our sites. We have RSP services, which is our specialized academic instruction, are all but one of our sites. We currently don't have services at CAP City, which is an independent study program. We have special day class programs located throughout the district, and therefore, different types of learning needs. And typically, are placed geographically throughout the district, as close to a student's school of residence as possible, and put together in classroom patterns or grade-level patterns so that students do not have to move every single year. Currently, we have 321 students in non-public school. We are pretty proud that we finished this year with 13% less students in non-public school than we had at the end of last school year. We continue to have six students in residential treatment centers, and they are placed throughout the United States. So in terms of how we pay for those services, we get various revenue. And this is a four-year snapshot of the budget plan revenue that we have reported in past years. And for this year, we're projecting our revenue to be about $127 million. The next slide will explain that more clearly. So we get various sources of revenue. It's never enough to provide all the services that we need, but we do get state special education revenue, which some of you may know it is $86.02, which are based on the district's average ADA enrollment, not the special education count. That's about $28.8 million. We also get revenue for transportation. This amount has never changed the entire time I've been the SALPA director. So costs are rising in that area, but we still get $3.2 million. Federal revenue, we both get IDEA funds, which is our federal grant, and then we get a pretty small preschool grant as well, and that's $10 million, a little over $10 million. Then, of course, we have the local contribution, which attracts a lot of attention. That is, of course, the district's share of contribution to provide services to our students. This line item also includes a little bit of, there are a couple of small grants, like our workability grant is included in here, our alternative dispute resolution, our transition partnership program with the Department of Rehab. The bulk of this money is the local contribution of $84.8 million. The total revenue is a little over $127 million. So before you change slides there, what I want to tell you is that this year, we were notified in the spring that we have been found to be significantly disproportionate, or SALPA. We have been in this situation before. We got out of it two other times, but we are back in significant disproportionality again. And what that means is that we have identified a disproportionate amount of students who are African-American and who have been classified as eligible under the emotional disturbance educational classification, as well as students who are African-American and have been suspended excessively. So because we're significantly disproportionate, we are required to do several steps going into the next school year. We must write a plan. We must identify our root cause about why this has happened. And we must take a percentage, which is 15% of this federal revenue, the main IDEA dollars. It equates to about $1.4 million, and we have to put it aside to allocate for the activities of the plan to address the disproportionality. All of this will take place next year. A committee will be formed. Data analysis will take place. Root cause identified. A plan developed. Root cause identified, a plan developed, and then resources allocated to the activities of that plan. And so that will have to come out of some of this revenue. Next slide, please. So then we have the expenditures. We have about $40.9 million devoted to certificated salaries. A lot of what we do in the special education department to provide services are people. So a large amount of the budget does go for salaries and benefits for teachers, psychologists, all of the staff to support students. Classified salaries are expected to be about $10.3 million. Employee benefits for both groups, about $34 million. And then supplies, this 4,000 object code of $1.9 million. So what's different about this line item is in this 4,000 group is where the $1.4 million was put aside for the significant disproportionality activities. So it's a little higher than it would be expected to be in other years. And then finally, or moving down, we have in the 5,000 category, $33 million projected for our contracts. Those are for our non-public schools, for residential treatment centers, and our contracts for non-public agencies such as speech providers, physical therapy providers, behavioral providers for our students. And then the last line item is indirect cost of about $3.3 million. Total expenditures of $124 million for next year. What's not included here and is not part of the plan that has to be submitted to the state is the additional $11 million that is projected to be needed, to be spent to provide transportation for our students to various school sites when they can't attend school at their home school. And then we come to the annual service plan. And the forms that you received in your packet were different this year from last. This year, we were required to take every single service, it's about a 31-page document, and to explain it in detail about what the service is that the SELPA would be providing. There was an accompanying code on each page. And then we were also to determine for next year where those services might take place and how they might be provided. So some of our very heavily used codes would be 330 for specialized academic instruction, 415 for speech and language, and occupational therapy of 450. Next slide, please. Then also in your packet, you got a spreadsheet that is actually a very long and wide document, so you probably couldn't see it all. It's generated so that every school that the SELPA serves is listed on the form, and then those service code numbers are across the top. And this report is pulled on any given day off of our system, and it demonstrates the services that are at that school site because the students are there, not because that's what the service is. So services follow the students. It's not a static thing. And so this year, we will be submitting three of these spreadsheets to the state as our plan. One for the entire SELPA. And then our two independent charter schools, Sol Arias and YPSA, have their own spreadsheet because they now do separate reporting, but because we provide their funding and they are part of our SELPA, we include them in our report as well. This spreadsheet is simply more evidence to the state that we will provide a full continuum of services to all of our eligible students next year. Next slide. So now we would ask that we're available for any questions that you might have, and then we'd ask that you conduct the public hearing for the annual service and budget plan for 2021. Thank you.
And before we open it up to Board Member questions and comments, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, there are four public comments. And the first is from Renee Webster Hawkins. And it says, "For many years, the community has been systematically demanding accountability to improve outcomes for and decrease segregation of students with disabilities. In 2017, the Council of Great City Schools presented a 176-page report describing in painful detail the racism and systemic bias that subordinated our students with disabilities to second-class status and fueled the school-to-prison pipeline. It also included a blueprint for the district to make these organizational improvements, yet it has not been implemented. Last year, in response to this annual exercise, the CAC publicly called for five things. First, I want to applaud the superintendent on dismantling the assessment MOU, which prohibited elementary teachers from administering easy screeners to measure their students' academic skill acquisition. The other items, however, remain unaddressed by this annual service plan and annual budget plan. The CAC's call to action demanded greater detail, transparency in the programs and expenditures for special education services. What kids are being served? How are they being served? Where are they being served? Are you confident of those answers by reading these reports? You were asked to adopt policies requiring performance metrics to be included in all vendor contracts to ensure that student outcomes were being realized rather than just service minutes delivered. You were asked to ensure that these documents, the ASP and ABP that staff is asking you to approve now, clearly commit to a plan to implement a multi-tiered system of support to end this district's 30-year history of segregating and downdrafting students with disabilities. This plan does not do these things, nor does it provide you evidence that appropriate services are being provided to students with disabilities." The next comment is from Allison French-Toubot, and says, "Thank you for the work of staff in developing this plan. However, according to the parent leaders on the CAC, SUSD has a long way to go before achieving excellence in FAPE, and I encourage us all to focus on their analysis. It is disappointing that the summary calls out the total number of students receiving services and the number in non-district placements, but neglects to summarize the number in special day classes. Even as a parent of children who do not receive special education services, there are two elements that are very clear. One, SUSD must stop including elements of FAPE as bargaining items with SCTA. And two, spending nearly $12 million on transportation instead of dedicating those dollars to classroom aides and adaptive materials to keep students in general education classrooms is not a sustainable use of resources." Thank you. The next comment is from Angie Sutherland, Angel Garcia, Grace Terhio, Katie Connor. "We have a group comment for Coalition for Students with Disabilities. Dear President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board, On behalf of the Coalition for Students with Disabilities, over the past three years, there were 76 cases of special education litigation with settlements totaling $2,235,643. Please stop using special education funding to fight parents and students. Make the appropriate services and placements available in the first place and eliminate the resistance students experience in general education and other settings. That money, along with projected transportation money of $11,924,451, would go a long way towards including students in their schools. We need the district's finalized plan and implementation, or MTSS, to begin now. We also need a special education ombudsman slash parent liaison to help parents resolve some of these issues before they get serious. FSUSD, SDUSD, DC Public Schools, Fresno, and Pasadena have these positions. We need a trusted parent to serve in this role, not a district administrator. Recently, SCTA has shared a whole child proposal that includes provisions about their participation in the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, CAC. Teachers have been invited to the CAC for many years and can become members of the CAC. However, there is not an opportunity, as spelled out in ed code, for union representation on the CAC. A union could encourage members to join, but they cannot dictate who is appointed or what the individual teacher will advocate for. CAC is not part of collective bargaining." And the last comment is from Sarah Williams Kingsley, and says, "I want to use this opportunity to let the rest of the board know that after approximately 18 months, I resigned as the Secretary of the Community Advisory Committee. I don't believe the committee is operating in a way that best serves our students and wasn't able to redirect the work executive committee due to personnel differences. This committee serves a vital role, and I believe the district needs to provide more staff support to ensure the work of the committee meets the guidelines of the Brown Act for public meetings and receives the data and material they need to provide the necessary advisory functions. That isn't currently happening, and I hope the board can push the district staff in this direction." And that's the last public comment.
Okay, and I just want to make sure that we allotted, so I know we're going 30 minutes on each of these agendized item, public comment, maximum total. And we have all written comments cataloged, available online. And also, the board members have them, which has been really helpful in terms of following along. But we received a group submission, and usually, a group submission gets five minutes. And so I just want to make sure, I think you cut off at two, that we complete that submission from the Coalition on Students with Disabilities.
Okay. Let's see. Child Proposer. Okay, CAC is not part of collective bargaining. Our kids do not have a union to back them with endless resources and lobbyists. It is a community committee. The CAC operates off of its bylaws, a local plan, California education codes, and the Brown Act. These cannot be trumped by collective bargaining. SCTA also proposes a district-wide special education advisory committee composed of district staff and eight of their represented members, quote, "to guide the ongoing special education services," unquote. This is serious overreach and an outrage. Special education services are guided by federal law, IDEA, and are unique to each child. Their services are decided by their IEP teams, not by a vote of union members. This reminds us of the over-20-year nightmare of Appendix D. Special education services are not to be bargained. No more barriers for students. Accountability now." That was the end of that comment.
President Ryan, your microphone's off.
Thank you, Board Member Minnick. Just to make sure we make it through this incredibly dense agenda, if we can limit our comments to two questions per board member, if we then have remaining time, we can circle back. So if I can see a show of hands, those who have questions. Board Member Pritchett, followed by Board Member Garcia, followed by Board Member Morowski, followed by Board Member Minnick.
Sorry about that. Thank you, President Ryan. I just have one question and public comment. We had a couple of comments about the new budget and aides. Becky, can you relay anything on that comment?
I'm not familiar with what the speakers were talking about. The calculations that we did, there was not an across-the-board reduction in instructional aides. We continue to have aides supporting our special day classes. So I'm not really sure what that's about.
So I actually spoke to one of those parents today, and their worry was that in the budget that the governor put out, that aides would be taken out of the classroom. So that's not true. That's not something that you had heard of, correct?
I've been following the press on that, and I haven't read anything that supported that. And that has not been our plan for the fall, for sure.
Is classroom aides paid out of federal or state funds?
A combination of both.
And is classroom aides and one-on-one aides the same thing?
No, those are different. We do, currently, the collective bargaining agreement has a stipulation for aide coverage, and as well as there is some notation in ed code for special day classes to have instructional aides. One-on-one aides, we call them additional adult support. That's based on an assessment on whether a student needs that or not.
Okay, maybe you and I can talk offline tomorrow, and I can get some more information as well. And then, once we get more information, we can send out a B.C. to the board. Thank you.
Can I go? You're muted.
Go ahead, Board Member Garcia.
Thank you, okay. So I guess I'll limit my questions to two. Can you elaborate on the additional $11 million for transportation? I didn't see why you're anticipating $11 million more in transportation services for 2020-21 school year.
So every year, there is a projected amount for transportation. And it's a figure that the Budget Office develops for us. It is not a requirement of this report that we are bringing you tonight, but without the transportation figures in there, it does not give a whole picture of what the projected expenditures are for next year.
So that's just a projection? You still don't know why there would be such a huge increase for transportation services? Is it related to how we're returning back to schools? Is it related to COVID, or?
So in past years, like I believe last year's projection was about $12 million. Now, most likely, the actual expenses are a lot less than that because we, of course, didn't transport students after the middle of March. So every year, we do have a projected, you know, line item for that. And it runs out of the Transportation Department, and it's to cover the bus drivers, the management of the bus drivers, and mechanics. And we run quite a few bus routes for students because we don't have a full complement of service on every single school site that allows every student to attend their home school. So certainly, if we had more capacity to do that, then conceivably, our transportation costs would go down.
Okay, so, and then my next question, I'm just trying to figure out if CARES dollars would be available for the need to increase the transportation services. But we know that while the governor has yet to sign the budget for 2020-2021, there is additional funding for special ed. And a district like Sac City would get additional funds. And those are probably not included in this plan. So I'm wondering, when do we come back? Once we know how much additional revenue Sac City gets, when do we come back to the plan and figure out how to update the plan? Because we do come back to revise the adopted budget once we get the actual numbers. Do we do the same with this plan?
To my knowledge, there is not a current requirement to do that. Next year, the SELPA will be rewriting its entire local plan, which is the umbrella that this plan that's being adopted tonight hopefully sits under. It was supposed to be done this year, and because of COVID, they have extended the deadline to June of 2021. So that too will come to the board. I'm not aware of a specific requirement that if the budget changes, that this plan needs to be amended.
Would it impact the plan in any way, in any way, if you're getting millions of dollars in additional funds? I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to revisit this conversation, given that the district may, I think, benefit in a big way from what's being proposed right now. So I just don't want for this to be tonight's conversation, and then we don't get to see something else for another year. And in the meantime, there's a huge infusion of-- And in the meantime, there's a huge infusion of dollars that would be available to support or enhance the services that are being spelled out into plan. So I don't know who can answer that question. And then, if there's time, I do have a couple more questions, so.
As a board, you are the governing board of the SULPA, so you could ask the SULPA to bring a report to you at any time.
Can we do that, then?
Yeah, Member Garcia, what we'll do is we will include, as part of our update at the July board meeting, an update on where we think we might be given those budget details from the state budget, and then come back and figure out how it might impact the current plan. So we'll at least bring an update at the July board meeting and then determine what it would take to make changes, more substantive changes to the actual plan.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. Board Member Morowski.
Thank you. Thank you to staff for including a little more detail, I think, in this presentation than I remember from last time in terms of some of the facts that were presented about, you know, what the diagnoses are, of how many kids have different disabilities, and some of the, I think, a little bit improved information. But I do want to echo Ms. Webster Hawkins' comments and some of the other comments from CAC members and special education advocates in terms of, you know, we just need more transparency in this program. It's over around $125 million. I think the buckets that are in the budget presentation are still far too large to really have a meaningful understanding of where the funds are being spent and how students are being served. I know this is not a new conversation. I think I sound like a broken record on this, but I didn't see specifically in the board report, there was a section that said "next steps." And I didn't see specifically that one of the next steps was to work on, in partnership with me and the CAC members that formed a budget committee to work on a new budget display for the special education program. So just wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to that. Is that part of what you consider a next step for the next fiscal year? So we can be in a position to, by this time next fiscal year, to have a much more robust presentation?
Absolutely. I think we had some preliminary discussion in the fall with the CAC, and I think there was some discrepancy in understanding about what each party was asking for. So I think a really positive next step would be either in late summer or very early fall to have a meeting to really nail down what kind of information the CAC and you are looking for in terms of greater transparency, so that we can bring that as a regular item to the CAC meetings or to publicize on a website or whatever, so that there is more in-time information.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And again, I think this has been a priority of mine. I didn't push as hard this year, given all of the various stressors we were dealing with, to have that sort of presentation this year. But this is something that I am willing to work on in a detailed way. And it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't have to be me if there are other board members that want to weigh in. But I have been liaison to the Community Advisory Committee and very interested in working on that. So I appreciate the verbal commitment to develop that more robust presentation. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board Member Morowski. Board Member Minnick.
Thanks, Anne, thanks, Ms. Bryant. I had a couple of questions, but I'm gonna drop down to one because I see we're falling behind, and I was so excited that we were on time. But you had mentioned how, and it's no surprise, that we have been disproportionately identifying African-American students in special ed. And I know, I think it was referenced in Ms. Webster Hawkins' comment as well. And you referenced that you'll be charged with writing a plan for next year to address that. I wanted to find out, kind of, what kind of timeline, what's a realistic timeline? Will we see that plan? And then, I know that doesn't happen kind of overnight, but do you have any kind of thoughts about what we are doing or what we can do, kind of, in the meantime that doesn't have to wait until this plan happens? Because I'm concerned that, you know, in the meantime, we're going to continue the same practices that are disproportionately identifying these kids.
Right. In terms of the timelines, the plan is due December 15th. It actually would have been due prior to the end of this school year had we not had a COVID crisis. So all of the timelines have been pushed back, and the requirements are to gather a group of people, actually, a kind of an executive leadership group, and then more of a community group, and to really look at root causes and to develop strategies. Some of the things that we started to do this year, knowing that we most likely were going into significant disproportionality, was to revisit our discipline policies for all students and did a reset on our training with every administrator in the district. And we did that in February, right before schools closed. And, you know, clearly, staff need additional professional learning and assessment practices and making determinations of eligibility for students. We have less students who are being qualified as emotionally disturbed, but sadly, we're still disproportionately identifying students who are African-American for that category. So I think there are many practices. The MTSS work will definitely be headed in that right direction for us is to have opportunities to intervene much earlier before a student is ever assessed and found eligible for special education for any reason. So many of the district's initiatives right now are spot on to address this.
Okay, well, that's good to know that, you know, we're already kind of moving forward. It's not fast enough because it never is, but like, at least we're moving in the right direction. Cool, thank you.
So, Ms. Bryant, just two quick last things as Board Member Minnick pointed out that we were already over time. The first is, I think, the confusion based on Board Member Pritchett's comments and a couple of the comments that we received in public comment earlier this evening is that, as part of the state budget deal that was reached, there is a requirement that you not have classified layoffs of bus drivers or janitors. However, it does not, in fact, exempt aids from layoffs. Now, that doesn't mean that Sac City is laying off aides, but, you know, I think it's the legitimate concern, given the gravity of the fiscal crisis and how that has been accelerated by the COVID-19 recession, that that is not a protected category. So I just want to point that out. The second piece is, you know, I do have a question in line with what Board Member Minnick said. I mean, it is very troubling to me to see the disproportionate identification of Black students for special ed, and I've experienced that in my own family. My question is, how much would an individual classroom have their own leeway in determining the best school discipline policies to put in place when a student is exhibiting behaviors in a classroom? Because one of my grave concerns here is we actually had to go to the state and advocate for state-level changes to willful defiance as a catch-all policy that we knew was harming Black and Brown students because we could not enact that district-wide without having that state-level ed code backing.
You know, I think the advocacy at the state has absolutely been necessary to kind of move the dial forward. It's also made us internally look at our policies, look at real-time suspension data, school by school, and to determine whether or not it's true and accurate. And for any student, every student deserves an appropriate education. And when we do not accept students' differences and we discipline because they are different in some way, that's not equity. And we need to really be mindful of that. And I think Chief Academic Officer Betas, you know, whole work around MTSS. It's not just academics, it's climate. And that's why we front-loaded the revisiting of the discipline policies this year.
But what you're saying, Becky, is that there is wide discretion across the district and in the classroom for how that is implemented?
Yes, there is. And just as there are also some discretionary practices in assessment practices, it's not cut and dry around finding a student eligible under the ED classification. There is a certain amount of subjectivity to it.
So this is when inequities are persistent. So I'm gonna let us close out this item. I think that this is a subject that is ripe for two-bys for board members who want to do a deeper dive into this very complex and important subject. But thank you for your work, and we look forward to continuing this conversation. Item 9.2, Public Hearing on Resolution Number 3151 through 3154, Resolutions to Convey Public Sidewalk, Pedestrian, and Public Utilities Easements to the City of Sacramento for Transportation Services and the Central Kitchen.
Good evening, President Ryan, members of the board and Superintendent Aguilar. I'm Nathaniel Browning. And before you tonight are two easements for the transportation services and central kitchen construction projects. The City of Sacramento requires a public sidewalk, pedestrian, and public utilities easement to provide public access and utilities to those new facilities. California Education Code requires the district to hold a public hearing when we convey easements of this nature. And the board will act upon these resolutions this evening on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, there's no public comment on this item.
Okay, so we have five minutes for board member discussion. Do we have board member questions or comments? Board Member Garcia.
I'm curious to see what the outreach effort is in terms of, for a public hearing, especially in the surrounding neighborhoods, so that they are aware that this public hearing is happening and encourage input and whatnot. So what is, how are you doing that now?
So after the board passed the resolutions last week to convey these easements, those resolutions were posted in three public areas, and an article was posted in the Sacramento Bee for those as well.
There's no more direct outreach to those particular neighborhoods that may be impacted by some of the work. It just seems as though the process may be a little bit antiquated. And, you know, I'm not, I think it's probably what's, I don't know how that is determined, but I think that it would go a long way in terms of doing a more proactive effort to engage the immediate communities or neighborhoods with some of these projects, to encourage them to participate in the public input process.
Understood. On these items, it was an easement for more public access for a right-of-way on a sidewalk in front of both the transportation services and central kitchen, as well as public utilities. So we didn't see an impact such as noise or pollution or anything like that to the surrounding neighborhoods. I understand what you're saying. You're on mute, President Ryan.
Sorry, we don't have any other questions on this item. This was an information-only item. Item 9.3, Public Hearing on Resolution Number 3155 and 3156, Resolutions to Convey Utility Easement Entitlements to the Sacramento Municipal Utilities District for Leotada Floyd, the Floyd Farms, and John F. Kennedy High School projects.
Good evening again. Before you tonight are two additional easements, but these two are for Floyd Farms and John F. Kennedy High School construction projects. The Sacramento Municipal Utilities District, SMUD, has jurisdiction over the electrical distribution that is required to serve the future Floyd Farms. SMUD is also updating its infrastructure at JFK High School. Both projects require utilities easement to provide electrical services, and the California Education Code requires the district to hold a public hearing when we convey easements of this nature. The board will act upon these resolutions this evening on the consent agenda as well. Thank you.
Once again, I want to remind board members who are going off-camera that we need four board members showing to have a quorum. Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, President Ryan, no, no public comment on this item.
Do we have any board member comments or questions? Okay, looks like we have none. Oh, sorry. Board Member Morowski, followed by Board Member Woo.
Thank you. Just because this item has come up and it's related, we have not heard about it for a little while, I just wanted to check in really quickly on the status of Floyd Farms. I know we've run into a little, a few hiccups, but is everything going according to schedule at this point?
So the Floyd Farms project, it has been delayed right now. There's been a number of complications with the easement of a 10-foot water main running through the property. We've been working with the City Department of Utilities on a vibration monitoring plan during construction. Additionally, there have been an additional delay in relation to the city's developer for the community gardens aspect of that. We are in the process of working out details on that and anticipate bringing something, more information to the board in the coming weeks on that item as things start to mature a little bit. We can present to you at that time.
Okay, wonderful. This is a high-priority project for me and I know for many of our board members. So I appreciate you keeping us posted on this project. Thank you.
Board Member Woo.
Nathaniel, can you tell me where I can find the plans for the rebuild on Kennedy High School?
They can be requested at the District Maintenance, Operations, and Facilities Department. We can get an electronic copy of those as well, if desired.
Could you shoot me an electronic copy?
I'll work with the superintendent to make sure you get what you need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Woo. Looks like we don't have any other comments. Once again, this is an information item only. Moving on to item 10.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. Item 10.1, Approved COVID-19 Written Report Adoption, which will be presented this evening by Stephen Ramirez-Fong and Vincent Harris.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Board Members and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris. I'm the Chief of Continuous Improvement and Accountability, and I'm joining this evening with Mr. Stephen Fong, who's our LCAP's coordinator. It's our pleasure tonight to present the COVID-19 Operations Written Report, which is required for adoption. What's really important about this report is that it's an opportunity for you to see in a more formalized form, staff work, particularly over the school closure period as required by the governor's executive order. You've got ongoing, real-time updates, but this report will actually give you an opportunity to see in very concrete terms some of the major... to see in a very concrete terms, some of the major cross department work that's been taking place. In terms of tonight's presentation, we'll give you a summary of what's in the report and then of course end it with a request for adoption. One important thing to highlight is that, you know, everything is very fluid in this season of the pandemic. And so this week, Assembly Bill 77, which is anticipated to be signed, actually outlines some real important next steps in the LCAP development process, which actually changes elements of the LCAP approval process in the short term, in that there is not going to be one required for the 2021 school year. And so you'll see further details in our presentation. If we go to the next slide, please. And so ultimately, in terms of the context for our presentation this evening, it is governed by the Executive Order of the Governor in 5620. And you'll see that the Executive Order has stated, basically moved initially the LCAP approval to December of this year. It shifted the three-year cycle to 2122 through 2324, and then basically established or mandated that this report be created and then adopted by the Board. As I mentioned, just on the last slide, Assembly Bill 77, which again, we expect it to be approved momentarily, would eliminate the 2021 LCAP requirement and basically establish a new requirement for a learning and continuity attendance plan, which would be brought to Board by September 30th of this year. You know, in terms of context of this presentation, again, just want to emphasize, this in no way substitutes for the LCAP work. And then so as, you know, many community members and board members have asked, certainly we're going to be doing the engagement work necessary to ensure we hear community voice as we roll out the district's overall strategic plan through the LCAP. But this written report is a very distinct staff report to a large degree, which we look forward to sharing with you. Next slide, please. And then again, this offers the overall timeline. As you can see, with the adoption this evening, we will submit it to the Sacramento County Office of Education. And then basically with this process, unlike with the LCAP, SCOE will simply acknowledge receipt of the report and then actually will move into many of our activities that we've done historically for the LCAP. And now with the impending approval of the learning continuity attendance plan, there actually will be some significant work over the summer to build our engagement. And then we'll also be looking to get the approval at this time next year for the new three-year LCAP plan. And we look forward to sharing that with the community and Board as we develop it. And our LCAP PAC, as you've heard from in many settings, is very committed to creating a very robust inclusive plan, incorporating many of the themes from tonight's Board meeting. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Ramirez-Fong, and he'll take you through more of the details.
Good evening, Board, and I'm ever Superintendent. As we shared in the LCAP update presentation last week, the Operations Written Report is a tool for communicating the impacts of school closures in these past three months and the changes the district has made in response. Included in the response is a description of how the district has met the needs of English learners, foster youth, homeless youth, our socioeconomically disadvantaged students, which collectively are known as underdug students, and descriptions of our distance learning, provision of school meals, and arrangement for supervision of students. Next slide, please. This report, like many of the reports we create as a district, is the result of the efforts of many contributors. Just want to offer thanks to all the staff who provided specific descriptions, as well as the staff across many departments, who developed the robust communications and plans and materials that served as the key data sources for this report. I just want to note that beyond the departments that are listed here, within each of those top bullets, there's many departmental efforts that go into those reports. One needs to only look at the website or Board Communications to know that there's been a robust amount of information out there that contributed to this report. Next slide, please. In the next five slides, we have some highlights of the content of the report, and we encourage anyone who wants to read about any of these items in more detail to go to the report itself. So regarding the key impacts of school closures on students and families, we highlighted here the access to basic services, physical separation from supports that are traditionally delivered at the school site, the sense of isolation and disconnection, which can be underestimated, and the disruption to curriculum-facing gradient reticulation. Many of these we've noted in the coronavirus updates and that we discussed in detail. Next slide, please. Some of the efforts of staff to meet the needs of underdug students, I mean, included targeted professional learning, case management to address individual student needs, and collaboration with partners to connect students and families to services. Next slide, please. Some of the steps taken to deliver distance learning, and again, I would really refer to some of the past work of the coronavirus updates and some of the detailed information there. Here we've highlighted the professional development, also the definition of essential standards and identification of aligned curriculum materials, and also the ongoing targeted outreach as the result of ongoing assessment, so that constant assessment of which students are engaged, as well as what the students' needs are, and that focused outreach as a result. Next slide, please. Within the provision of meals, key steps have included the implementation of a different delivery model, so a curbside drive-through meal pickup that has been able to help increase the social distancing practices, as well as other practices that are occurring at the individual level, use of personal pickup equipment, and then a number of partnerships that include local restaurants and the Sacramento Food Bank to deliver additional food resources beyond those that are being provided by the district. And lastly, in the final section of the report, with the arrangement for supervision and accounting for students, the provision of referrals to local agencies and services that provide childcare, as we've heard, the regular surveys of students to conduct these assessments, and then home visits, that, you know, additional tier of follow-up to make contact with students who get to be engaged and reached. So in the report, we've acknowledged that school closures, as well as the broad economic impacts, have exacerbated inequities. That's an important acknowledgement that was noted, has been noted multiple times by community members. And we've also heard in our coronavirus updates about the school closure dashboard, the surveys and the other measures that we're using to continue assessing needs and making data-driven decisions. Those are both important points we want to highlight here. Important to note for this report is that we have attached the dependent charter of school operations written reports. Those would include Bowling Green Elementary Charter School, George Washington Carver School, Arts and Science, New Joseph Bonheim Community Charter School, Sacramento New Technology High School, and the Met Sacramento High School. Next slide, please. Following adoption of the COVID-19 Operations Written Report, as Chief Harris noted, will be submitted to the Sacramento County Office of Education and posted on our website so that the community can access it. And just to reiterate, Chief Harris already went through the key implications of Assembly Bill 77. And we've here noted that the timeline for approval of the new and anticipated required learning continuity attendance plan would be a very accelerated timeline. I do want to note that there is an error on the slide. It should read September 30th, 2020. So just for the public. But the August 1st template release anticipation to the September 30th approval date will be a challenging timeline given the start of school. And so we'll be working on this over the summer and coming back to the Board, really at the start of the Board sessions, to share that work. So lastly, we are seeking approval for SCUSDs and the five dependent charter schools COVID-19 Operations Written Reports. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have one public comment. And it's from Renee Webster-Hawkins. And it says, "As a member of the LCAP PAC, I couldn't be prouder to work alongside parents from each trustee area who are passionate, smart, and motivated to both support and push this district to meet or exceed the needs of all students during this pandemic and opportunity to disrupt the institutional racism at every level. Thank you to the superintendent for engaging the PAC in the district's plan to return to learning in fall 2020. Thank you for hearing that we are seeking a commitment to high-quality instruction and social-emotional support, particularly that meets the needs of our most vulnerable students first. Thank you for hearing that our community needs both onsite and at-home learning options for students depending on student learning styles, family health risks, and family employment circumstances, and that both onsite and remote learning must be equally rigorous and supportive. Thank you for hearing that we seek consistency and accountability across all school sites so that students and families at each school site can expect a similar quality of instruction and engagement by teachers. Thank you for hearing that we are insisting that professional development in culturally responsive instructional practices and distance learning be mandatory. Thank you for hearing that the district should maintain instructional aids and utilize them robustly to help teachers in the classroom, even though the state budget doesn't protect them from layoffs. Thank you for listening to our suggestions that vacant district or community buildings be utilized to increase the facilities needed for physically distanced classrooms and that after-school programs be engaged to provide more robust social-emotional support for all students throughout the school day so that our teachers can focus on teaching. I think we were all impressed with the quality of the district's plan for returning to true learning in the fall. Above all, thank you for hearing that physical safety, mental health, and racial justice must be the essential foundation for the district's return to learning plans."
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and take board member questions and comments. Again, we have 10 minutes for questions and discussion. We'll have two questions per board member and then circle back. We have remaining time. Can I see a show of hands on who would like to ask a question? Okay. Board Member Murawski?
I guess one of, one of the things that I'm curious about is we, we talked a lot about, you know, how we're going to measure how we're doing and the school closure dashboard. And now I am wondering if there's a bit of paralysis by analysis in terms of making that, that dashboard public? Have we come to a place where we're confident in saying, you know, I think this, this report is supposed to reflect sort of what we've done? And I see some of the, the data reflected in there, but I would also like to know, you know, are we at a place where that dashboard can be, can be made public, reported to the Board? Or what is the, what is the plan or process to do so?
Member Murawski, thank you for the question. We will look into, I know you've asked this question, so we will make sure that we look at which of the metrics of that dashboard will just have a public-facing component to it. I don't know that it'll be in the form that, that it exists today, but, but certainly either in the form of PDF reports or perhaps Tableau. But we will follow up and, and make sure that we have a timeline and provide either an update or the release of some of those reports before the July meeting.
Okay, wonderful. And, you know, it's, I, so much, so much amazing work has gone into all of what this district has accomplished over the last few months. So I just want to express my gratitude for, for all that work. And, you know, I think I'm, I'm excited to see, you know, how, how we did, how, how universally some of the, some of the efforts were, were applied and so forth. And so I think it'll be very important for informing our way forward. So I appreciate the report and, and all the work that's, that's been done, that's reflected here. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Murawski. Looks like we don't have any other board member questions on this item. We will be taking a roll call vote. The one question that I had was really around the process, you know, as we submit this to SCOE for review and feedback, you know, what are they looking to provide in terms of feedback consistent with best practices, given, you know, the COVID report is new and with uncharted territories? I can imagine that even their understanding of what should be included consistent with the demonstration of a commitment to quality teaching and learning is probably hard, hard to define.
Thank you for the question. For this particular report, as Chief Harris noted, it's primarily a tool to communicate to our communities at the local level. I mean, SCOE has been clear with that. In contrast, the learning continuity and attendance plan that we mentioned that is to be completed by September is much more in line with the LCAP in its relationship to SCOE. So we'll be approving that here at the Board, the local level, and then it goes to SCOE for their feedback, their input, and our potential follow-up. And the elements of that report do also encompass some of the things that have been discussed here tonight, such as how we're assessing learning loss and many of the other aspects that have come up in conversation. So this report is much more of our local tool, and SCOE ultimately lets it rest at this level, whereas the next, the next piece, the newly created requirement that we anticipate from Assembly Bill 77, will look much more like our traditional LCAP relationship.
Thank you, Mr. Fong, for making that distinction. I appreciate that. This is an item for action, and so we are going to go ahead and take a motion and a second, and then a roll call vote. I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, Superintendent, will you please call roll?
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Ryan?
Aye.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, and again, our deep appreciation to the team. Item 10.2 Approve the School Plan for Student Achievement Adoption, this evening presented by Kelly Adupo and Vincent Harris.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Board Members and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris and, again, Chief of Continuous Improvement and Accountability. I'm joined this evening in the presentation with Dr. Kelly Adipo, our Director of State and Federal Programs, Tumua, who's one of our Instructional Assistant Superintendents, and then her, who's one of our principals at Edward Kimball Elementary School. We look forward tonight to share with you the request for the approval of our school plans for student achievement, but actually we'll emphasize, this presentation is actually meant to give you a sense of how we've applied our own internal cycle of continuous improvement to this process. And so you're gonna hear three big initiatives or change ideas that we implemented this school year in support of building capacity for site plans to really resonate more clearly for student achievement. There's still variation, of course, but these three ideas that you'll hear about this evening were part of our effort to recognize that if we really are going to get to a place of meeting the promise of the guiding principle, we really need robust site plans across the Board. And so you'll hear one idea around the drumbeat about sharing information early in the school year and continuing that throughout the school year. You'll hear a little bit about SIPSA mid-year. Of course, we had a full presentation back in February on that topic. And then finally, you'll have an example of how, in collaboration with the academic office, we actually have thought through an emergent idea around how do we do real-time SIPSA coaching and monitoring? And so you'll hear that idea as well in the presentation. If we go to the next slide. You know, ultimately, any plan has to tie to something important. And so in the context of our school plans for student achievement, it really is anchored in, in the statements on this page. You know, ultimately, these plans are meant to disrupt and interrupt the inequities that we know exist, that we've been discussing this entire Board meeting. And then anchoring the, the promise of our guiding principle really speaks to the work of our site leaders and our teachers and our communities, and how do we fulfill the promise of all students graduating, all students having an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest range of options? To do that requires lots of intent, lots of hard work. If we go to the next slide. We've shown this slide several times, obviously in presentations, particularly this time of year, because this represents the most important intersection of how do we make the system stronger, how do we make it better, how do we make it deliver for all students? And so as you look at this framework, really our SIPSA's are founded, and actually really our LCAP as well, are founded around this notion of how do we improve student performance? And so that's the anchor for both of these documents. And then the arrows here, of course, matter because they're, the California Dashboard, along with our District Performance and Targeted Action Index, are foundational data, which are really important for saying, these are the things that matter for students, and if we move these indicators on behalf of students, we improve the system. And then ultimately, by doing our district planning well and our site planning well, we're able to create the priorities for our budget, which of course is incredibly important in these, in these very tight fiscal times. We go to the next- We go to the next slide. And as the board has already spoken to several times, this notion of the PELP problem of practice, really, this notion of how do we disrupt, and really, the unacceptable level of student achievement particularly among our most vulnerable students, and grounding every decision and every budget and instructional decision in school site and district plans using principles of cycles of continuous improvement. The way we do that is by having effective LCAP and having effective site plans. And those plans ensure that all students can learn. With that, if we go to the next slide. And then ultimately, this slide is just meant to affirm that the strategic planning processes are aligned. So our site planning process really is tightly aligned to our overall district planning process, which comes through our LCAP. And so as we think about these processes and compare them, they really are drawn in the same way. What do our students need is the fundamental needs assessment basis of these plans. And we develop goals specifically to disrupt inequities so that we improve student outcomes. And then we also engage in community engagement. As you've heard, for the LCAP, it's a broad set of community partners district-wide. For each of our sites is through the school site councils, which have representation of the local community of those sites. And then for both entities, and that's why we're excited about talking about our change ideas with the SIPSA's, we've instituted a mid-year review process to, again, make these plans come to life so that they mean something throughout the school year. Go to the next slide. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Odepo to take you deeper into some of the more specifics.
Good evening, Superintendent President Ryan and Board Members. I'm Kelly Odepo, and I'd like to talk a little bit about our efforts to support the development of our school plans. So our SIPSA can include both state and federal funds. Each SIPSA includes strategies and actions that may be funded with Title I Part A funds and/or supplemental concentration or LCFF supplemental concentration grant funds. We've included all of our state and federal funds on this slide because we thought it was important to acknowledge that funding sources like Title II, III, and IV, which are not included in the SIPSA, but are utilized to support the improvement of student achievement. Next slide, please. So in 2018, the California Department of Education conducted a federal program monitoring, or FPM. And the findings from this review helped to inform our SIPSA development process. The CDE's findings really shed light on the need for a process that supports data-informed decision-making, improving our support to staff, and making stronger connections between site planning as well as budget decision-making. Next slide, please. As a result, one of the tools we use to provide information and support to principals is the principal's bulletin. We use the bulletin as a continuous drumbeat of information and support for the SIPSA development process. Examples of bulletins posted are information about professional learning opportunities for site staff as well as school site council members, effective school site council meetings and how to run those meetings, as well as school site council best practices, timelines, as well as other support documents for principals. Next slide, please. So this slide is just a continuation of the support documents that we've provided on that principal's bulletin. Next slide, please. So as Mr. Harris mentioned, our mid-year review was another change idea that we implemented this year. And the purpose of the mid-year review process was to provide a structure for monitoring and evaluating SIPSA strategies. The review included a series of prompts designed to assist principals in describing their progress toward meeting their goals and performance to date. The data gleaned from the mid-year review informed one-stop decision-making or subsequent year planning and updates to the current year's SIPSA. Next slide, please. Principals also shared the outcomes of the mid-year review with their school site council to help with decision-making. And they also worked with their instructional assistant superintendents to discuss the outcomes of their review and their progress towards meeting expected outcomes. Now I'd like to hand it over to Mrs. Tumua to discuss supports for continuous improvement.
Thank you, Dr. Odepo. Good evening again, President Ryan, members of the board, and Superintendent Aguilar. I'm Tumua, and I serve as one of our Instructional Assistant Superintendents. As Mr. Harris shared, I will be sharing with you the change idea and specifically the work and the role of the IASs as we supported our school principals in this very important work of building and creating their school plans with their school leadership teams. Here you see in front of you our continuous improvement process. Our methodology for engaging in cycles of continuous improvement is shown here in this disciplined inquiry through these nine steps. Our process is built on Carnegie's Principles of Improvement Science and served as the foundation and our expectation in creating and building our school site plans. More explicitly, these nine steps served as the foundation, the question stands, if you will, to guide our school principals in the creation of their goals for their school plans. Through this disciplined approach, we are encouraged by the higher-quality plans and by the thoughtful processes our principals and their teams have engaged in. Next slide, please. In addition, our central office leadership team have received differentiated assistance support through our friends at the Sacramento County Office of Education. Specifically, SCOE supported us as critical friends in helping us to analyze and refine our SIPSA goal statements. And as a result, through the partnership of the Continuous Improvement and Accountability Team and with the Instructional Assistant Superintendents and the Academic Team, we were able to use and create a goal statement or self-assessment reflection tool in helping us with our sessions with our principals. Each Instructional Assistant Superintendent met with their principals individually over Zoom or phone calls in this pandemic space to review and reflect together the SIPSA goals developed by the site. We use the four guiding questions to help guide us in our conversations and refine the SIPSA goals. That first question is, is the goal clear? Does it reflect a concrete and specific measurable outcome? That second question include, does the goal clearly specify a target? For example, is there a specific growth target calling out a desired percentage-specific increase? That third question, does the goal clearly identify student groups it intends to impact? Given our schools are held accountable for increasing student achievement with all students, but not just all students, we're also held accountable for increasing student outcomes for our significant student groups, we were truly looking for our school plans to lift this component up explicitly. And finally, the fourth question, does the goal clearly specify a date by when the goal is to be achieved? In other words, what's the target date for achieving the goal? Through these clear guiding questions from the reflection tool, again, jointly created by the Continuous Improvement and Accountability Team and the Instructional Assistant Superintendents, our principals were given the guidance and reflections opportunity necessary through the 101 coaching by way of their Instructional Assistant Superintendents to thoughtfully analyze and revise their SIPSA goals to match the needs of all children in their schools. And at this time, I'd like to turn it back to Mr. Harris.
And I'll go through this slide relatively quickly. You know, as we think about what's happening at our sites, you know, many ways to kind of aggregate data. And what we did was a sampling of the goal statements of our sites. And so not unexpected, but many of the call-outs that you would expect to see across our system are represented here in terms of increasing graduation rate, reducing chronic absenteeism. A major call-out for looking at ways to impact school climate, whether that's a reduction in the behaviors that lead to suspension or changing results within our school climate survey. And one point to make here, this is where we have the intersection of the work of the African-American Achievement Task Force, where the 5% variance, thanks to the leadership of MyC Lee as our SCL Director, really brought that to life as a site work. So all in there, these basically represent big trends that we saw across our school site plans. Next slide, and actually, if you set up this next slide, this is a really opportunity for our Edward Kimball Principal, Neng Her, to share really the important work of how site leaders make our cycle of continuous improvement come to life.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and Board Members. My name is Neng Her. I am the principal at Edward Kimball Elementary. And tonight I wanted to just be able to share the Edward Kimball SIPSA process implemented on the site level. So this year, how we proceeded with the SIPSA development process was we reviewed our SIPSA goals with school site council, ELAC, and staff. We wanted to make sure that we ensured all stakeholders understood our SIPSA goals and how, as a site, we would accomplish these goals. In addition to that, I provided site staff with a calendar of academic conference dates and PDs that would be held for the school year. And we use the academic conferences to really review data and connect back to our SIPSA goals. In addition to that, at site council and ELAC meetings, it has been a very critical and important piece to continuously review school data, academics, behavior, and attendance reports, and understanding student needs as we meet each and every time for our site council and ELAC meetings. From there, we had our mid-year progress monitoring review of our SIPSA goals. And through this process, it is eye-opening, not only just for the administrator, but for teachers and for the ELAC and site council, ELAC and site council to kind of just review our data with us. What we do is we review the school data, the academics, the behavior, and the attendance. And during this mid-year progress monitoring, we really discuss in real time, where are we as a site? Are we on track with our goals? Do we need to revise, modify our goals as needed to support our students' needs? What I have done this year is not only just rely on site council, ELAC, and just staff coming to me to provide feedback, but I generated a mid-year staff survey. And I started this my first year at Kimball. And I continue this year to really give me insight on, you know, how are we doing as a site? What do we need to make modifications or revisions to, to ensure that we meet our SIPSA goals? And then from the mid-year review, we move into, you know, the end of the year, the development of the SIPSA for the next school year. And what we do as a team is we, again, review site data. And we don't just review site data, we review how our students did with district assessments, with site assessments, and then how we did as a site for the end of the year on the California Dashboard for academics, behavior, attendance, ELS, and students that are socio-economically disadvantaged. And then from there, using the data, we determine measurable goals that focus on target groups with a specific timeline to ensure that we meet the needs of our students. Once we develop and revise our SIPSA goals for the next school year, we review the new goals with school site council, ELAC, and the staff again to ensure that we know what the goals are as we move into the next school year. The most important thing that I have recognized from the SIPSA process is we need to continuously have ongoing data review, understand that students are the priority, and really, that team collaboration from all stakeholders is the most important thing because we need to work as a team. And then in addition to that, just allowing and providing opportunities for feedback and suggestions in order to really ensure that we meet the needs of the students. Thank you.
So wrapping up, just, you know, three major headings here. One, just recognizing that in the midst of the pandemic, we really have had to emphasize flexibility. And our site leaders have been champions in this. You know, one element has been that our school site council approvals were all virtual, which was new guidance. We just got this spring, and it was a new practice for us and seemed to have gone well. Another opportunity for our flexibility has been, you know, traditionally, we've used S-Back as probably one of the most popular measures for student achievement. Of course, this past season, we've had to think about other ways of thinking about looking at student growth in terms of some internal work that sites do in letter grades. Again, as we think about the connectivity of the LCAP to SIPSA, we know there's opportunity to really build on that. And that's why it was really, really important for us to share our SIPSA goals broadly internally at Terna, but also with the LCAP PAC so that we're informing bottom-up, top-down kind of information sharing. So that as we have broad strategic goals of the system, they're informing site plans, and site plans are informing broad strategic goals of the system. And then finally, we really are continuing that intersection of strategies, linking to proposed expenditures, tying to student outcomes, having a through line with all those key elements. Because as Dr. Odepo shared, that was one of the gaps we had in our prior federal program monitoring audit, and that's been one of our points of emphasis, particularly over the last 18 months. With that, if we go to the next slide, we'll ask for adoption of our school site plans for student achievement.
Thank you, Vincent. And do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, there are three public comments. The first is from Dominique Herndon. And it says, "I work with students and have family members that have students enrolled in SUUSD. During COVID, my job was to work with students within seven districts throughout Sacramento with a larger scope to see and compare how districts were working to craft their district learning plans. It became very evident that SUUSD was very unprepared, like other districts. But SUUSD were laggards when it came to getting their distance learning plans crafted and outreach to students. Parents flooded my phones asking me for information. The SUUSD phone number was never answered by a live person during COVID. I called multiple times. SUUSD really needs to create a plan that looks not only at student achievement, but better administration, that knows how to lead, teachers that care for their students and have a history of teaching. Hire more students of color, include curriculum that is diverse and well-rounded, ethnic studies, real American history that is not whitewashed. Vocations and training needs to be added back into curriculum because traditional learning is not for every learner. Teachers need to have love and passion for teaching and their students. Teachers should not be afraid of the students they are getting paid to teach. It is already a well-known fact that SUUSD has the highest rates of suspensions and expulsions of black males. Will this plan do anything to address that? Seeing that, it is hard for any student to achieve anything if they are not present in the classroom. I think people really need to understand that these school districts are laying the foundations for our future generations. And if our largest school district in Sacramento is doing poorly with staff, admin, teacher, coaches, et cetera, just there to collect a paycheck, our city is doomed for a bleak, uninspired, and innovationless future." The next comment is from Sarah Williams Kingsley and says, "I have participated in the SPSA as a member of the school site committee for Isidore Cohen Elementary School for three years. I came before you a year ago to complain that there appears to be little district oversight of this process and a lack of training for SSC members. I'm happy to report our SSC received training this year. Unfortunately, the oversight process is still not as robust as it is intended to be. There is very little help figuring out how the spending impacts outcomes and how to align that to future spending plans. Secondly, the district oversight of the plans still leaves much room for improvement. Our site's plan has incorrect dates on it when submitted for approval. I noticed the error and asked for it to be corrected, but staff should have noticed the error themselves if they actually read the plans." And the last comment is from Leanna Sanchez. And it says, "How is EL money being spent for EL student outcomes? How are programs and services being evaluated?" And that's the last public comment.
Thank you. And we're going to take board member comments and questions. Board Member Minnick.
Just real quick, I appreciate that, the comment that was sent in about the training for the Site Councils. I know that when I was on Site Council years ago, it was, it's a confusing process. So I, and I'm glad that there's been some movement forward. I just wanted to commend the team. And I think I've probably said this maybe every year because it's been a little bit cooler every year. When I first came on the board, the district budget and the LCAP budget and the SIPSA's felt like these disjointed, like separate entities. And each time around, it feels a little bit more connected and aligned. And I know that was something that I felt important when I first came on. And I was surprised how it didn't feel that way. So I really appreciate now when we have these presentations, it really does feel like we're all, we're all on the same team and we're all doing this together. So I know that's not easy to do, to make sure all these things fall into place. So I just wanted to thank you for all, like how each consecutive year, it's a little closer to being right where we want it. So thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Minnick. Board Member Vang.
Thank you, President Ryan. First, I just wanted to just say thank you to staff for all your hard work. You know, I echo Member Minnick, recalling that when I came in, you know, there wasn't alignment between our budget, our LCAP and our SIPSA. And so I really appreciate Superintendent you and the staff really working hard to make sure that we align those things. And then I think, you know, we still have a lot of work ahead of us. I think, I think it was Sarah Williams Kingsley, one of our comment regarding district oversight on our SIPSA, right? I think, you know, we have mentioned this before, that site by site, it varies. You know, our School Site Council, and so we have to do a better job making sure that, you know, we provide as much support as we can to our School Site Council. And then I just wanted to actually, talking about School Site Council, I have a question for Ningher, Principal at Edward Kimball. Thank you so much for your presentation tonight. And I just had a question, maybe some lessons learned in light of COVID-19. I really appreciate your presentation of the work that y'all have been doing at the site level and wanted to know kind of, you know, just through your processes and because of COVID-19, what are some lessons learned, you know, as a principal at that site about having an effective School Site Council, just given everything that's going on? What worked well for you and what didn't as lessons learned?
Thank you for the question, Board Member Vang. You know, the one thing when COVID-19 just kind of allowed us to reflect on how we were going to teach our students and communicate with our parents. And then from that, how do we hold meetings effectively, right? From that point on, one thing that I have learned is really finding an effective tool that everyone will agree to in regards to communication, whether it be through email, whether it be through a remind.com. That was one thing that I found that was extremely critical. We all needed to be on the same page. So communication, clear communication tool that would be utilized throughout, you know, this time that we are remotely, you know, working from home. In addition to that, how do we make sure and ensure that everyone received information on time? And so by that, what I meant is really when we're setting up ELAC and Site Council meetings, you have to almost prepare in advance two to three dates and times and really saying, you know, what's going to work for everybody and then agree on that specific date and time. So those were two things that were extremely critical on my end first. And then from there, just sending out the agenda in advance, sending out the resource packets or data that we needed to review in advance prior to the meetings. Those were things that I knew on my end I needed to tighten up on because, you know, not everybody was going to have time to review on the spot, right? And so from that, in addition to that, I found that one thing that worked really effectively was having the notes in the Google Docs and allowing everyone to have access to it so that if they had questions, they can note it down. And then from there, we can kind of backtrack and be able to address those questions as needed. And then really sticking to time. The one thing that I found was really hard was on Zoom meetings, our time was just non-stop, right? We didn't really identify a time because sometimes our conversations were more in-depth with certain topics. But we needed to really structure time in so that it allowed everybody, you know, we all have kids at home. Some of us are teaching from home as well. And so we needed to ensure that we made time meaningful for everyone as participants. So those were just some things that I learned.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. And I asked that question in particular because as we move forward into the fall, right? I think it's going to be really important and Superintendent, I'm sure that maybe staff and cabinet have thought about this. It's just, you know, having to innovate and do things differently and what School Site Council may look like, right? And making sure, because I know that things are changing and making sure that we learn from each other what's worked and what hasn't. So thank you so much. And Ning, you know, I think leadership at a school site level makes all the difference. And so thank you so much for your hard work and your work in this district for our students.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have other board member comments on this item? Board Member Murawski and then Board Member Wood.
Thanks, President Ryan. Well, I just, I want to echo Member Minnick's comments and just commending the integration work that has gone on. It's, I think it's a great example of taking a document that could be just more of a compliance document and really making it an improvement tool. So just wanted to recognize the work that's gone into that. And I appreciate also the introduction of some of the new change ideas, like the mid-year progress monitoring. That seems like a, something that just cuts the cycle, you know, that time cycle in half, really, if you're doing it at least mid-year and then maybe some folks are doing it even more often than that. So just kudos on those things. I did have a couple of questions. One is, you know, how did, how does and how did the pandemic and the sort of weirdness of reopening schools next year, how did that play into the SIPSA development, if at all, for next year? And I also wanted to know, just kind of overall, I didn't get a clear sense from the presentation of what, what was the staff assessment of the quality of the SIPSA's as compared to prior years? I know this is, you know, a lot was asked of our admin staff to really develop these documents. So I'm curious about those two things.
So in terms of COVID-19 and the development of our SIPSA, SIPSA's, one of the biggest hurdles was our School Site Council meetings because normally school sites have their School Site Councils approve their SIPSA's in the late spring. And so that was one of the biggest hurdles because, as you know, there's variation at all of our school sites in terms of parents and their ability to access the internet. And so schools had to be creative in how they engage their parents. Sure.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify my question. I was, I was interested in sort of the content of the SIPSA's, whether that was affected by COVID-19. I understand the process had to be really different and flexible.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. So remember that during the one-stop process, a lot of the planning is done during that one-stop process in January. So a lot of principals really wanted to repurpose their money for technology and support online for students. So a lot of the conversations were around how they can support students with intervention services online, training for teachers. A lot of teachers still needed professional learning around Google, how to access effectively Google Classroom. So there were a lot of conversations about how they could repurpose their Title I money so that they could effectively teach students in an online environment. So that was mostly the conversations with principals for COVID-19.
And if I could add on your question, Board Member Murawski, on the kind of the quality through line. You know, ultimately, we've been working on raising the floor because obviously our 2018 FPM was, was hard in the sense of recognizing we had some significant gaps. You know, we don't necessarily have SIPSA grades, if you will. And as Instructional Assistant Superintendent Mu explained, one of our change ideas is actually, to your point completely, is how do we create coaching tools so that we can qualitatively speak to improvements in goal statements? Then improvement in seeing actions that make sense tying to the goal statement. What I can say to you is that, you know, year over year, we are seeing the inching up, if you will. And really, you know, inching up is not the right terminology per se, but we're seeing the floor rise in that we are seeing more SIPSA's that have actionable goals. We're seeing more SIPSA's where we can do a through line from the goal to the actions. But again, we don't have a grading system, if you will. And so our narrative, and that's what's really important about our coaching tool that's been co-developed with our Cycle, with our Continuous Improvement Office and with our Instructional Assistant Superintendents are a real emphasis. And this is, you know, right out of improvement science, is recognizing the variation in performance, but also tackling it with a positive presupposition that with more training, that floor will continue rising and we'll see a ceiling. So, you know, in answering your question, I know you probably would, you know, rightfully so would want to hear like, here's the As, Bs and Cs. What I can assure you is we've capped the Ds and Fs and we're lifting more people from C to B. And that's real, right? We've gotten affirmation in some of our conversations with outside partners. And we're looking forward actually to our next FPM, which will be happening next year, to get another proof point that we are seeing this lifting of the floor.
Thank you.
I want to, are you done, Lisa?
Yes.
I want to echo the comments of Mr. Minnick, Murawski and Mai Vang. I really want to congratulate you. I'm curious though, if you've had any pushback either from the teachers or the parents?
Not to my knowledge, no. I think Principal Her might be able to speak more directly because she has interactions with parents, but not to my knowledge.
So in our planning process for SIPSA, by really connecting with our parents, our school site and our ELAC council members, we really work hard to build a team of collaboration. And one, one parent actually said to me at the end of, you know, at the end of our Site Council meeting for this year to review our SIPSA, she said, you know, "Thank you so much for just allowing us to review data every single, you know, meeting that we have. Whether it take us, you know, an hour, two hours, reviewing the data shows the work that's happening at the site." And I have not had any pushback at all at Kimball. Parents are really active, they're engaged. We don't just talk about, you know, the, the meeting doesn't just stop at ELAC and Site Council meetings. We also discuss this, you know, at our coffee chats. We talk about things that really are important to our parents. And so we have different areas, you know, where we talk about these issues and we talk about it and then we bring it back to Site Council and really discuss, what do we do with this? You know, these are the concerns, what, what is it that our data reveals for our student needs? And then from there, as a team, how do we develop steps to, you know, make sure that we're meeting these goals? But in regards to just Kimball, we have not had pushback. We've had huge collaboration, especially with COVID-19. Parents are even more, you know, welcoming in the fact that we're sharing information. We're talking about the data and we want collaboration from everybody.
Well, hopefully because of COVID-19, we won't have too much backsliding. But this is really exciting information.
Thank you.
Board Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. So I did personally see improvement on some of the SIPSA's that I read. I think there, like everything, there's continuous improvement, right? So in that spirit, there's always learning, just lessons learned and celebrate the positive, but recognize the opportunities for improvement. I did have a question though regarding the role of the County Office of Education and specifically with some of the sites that were identified for, you know, comprehensive assistance or differentiated assistance, whether it's under ESSO or it's under the state accountability system. So if you can elaborate a little bit of what the role of the County Office of Education is relative to those particular sites in supporting or helping them with their SIPSA.
I don't know if we're, someone is on mute. Kelly.
Well, Garcia, as you described the CSI, ATS I programs, I mean, certainly, you know, we do have a number of sites that did qualify under both of those programs in terms of the comprehensive support and improvement, additional targeted support and improvement. You know, as we do this type of work, and Dr. Odepo can add on if need be, you know, a lot of that work actually is with their SIPSA and with their School Site Council. So the county's role really is not necessarily as directive or prescriptive, but both for our CSI and ATS I sites, we expect them to have plans that really address the gaps that got them onto that list, which typically relate to obviously dashboard measures where students and the site itself has a number of reds. And then also specifically, you know, because, you know, with CSI and ATS I, we also still have SIG. SIG is actually a place where you do have kind of the intersectionality of these types of interventions. And the county in our SIG work actually plays a leading role of co-facilitating meetings. So one of the complexities here is that these measures to some degree aren't mutually exclusive. And so sites that are SIG actually end up being CSI and ATS I as well. And so through the SIG work, the county is very much a direct partner. But in terms of CSI and ATS I, the county serves as advisor. They basically have convened districts to talk about best practices in terms of intervention. But their role is letting the sites then, through the site leadership and through our supervision, provide support. So I'd say the tightest alignment is with SIG, CSI, ATS I. The county serves more as an advisory role of hero practices and we're bringing districts together to share. And then ultimately, you know, sites themselves really are the keepers of what the plan turns out to be.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do we have any other board member comments? Okay, I want to again thank the team for their incredible dedication, really, over what has now been a two-year journey from first identifying the SIPSA as a unit of change and figuring out how you could utilize the SIPSA in alignment with the budget and LCAP to really move campus-level behavior and empower our families and teachers and administrators to use continuous improvement in a very real and actionable way. And I think we've seen that. And it's incredibly to me impressive to Principal Her to bring some of these bright spots in regularly as we talk about the SIPSA development over the years. I mean, this is a way to look at leaders embracing this work, figuring out how to continue to better the process and the community engagement and the potential for seeing that grow to a district-wide initiative where all SIPSA's are high-quality and have energy and commitment to alignment and institutional change. So I'm just very appreciative of your efforts.
President Ryan, if I can just mention and also just thank the staff for their hard work. And as you mentioned, this has been sort of the initial entry point for the penetration of continuous improvement across the entire district with an activity that everybody is responsible for, for showing evidence that we are acquiring these competencies of continuous improvement principles. And as Member Murawski said, I do want to thank And as Member Morowski said, I do want to thank all of our staff who have leaned in and embraced this 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 effort, not as one that is going to be, is going to continue to be treated as a compliance regulatory activity, but one in which you can find ways to continue to be innovative in how you respond to the needs of our students. But also ties back to the very powerful problem of practice that was constructed with community members and parents that tasked us to ensure that we were meeting the needs of all of our students, particularly our most vulnerable students, by creating a nexus between all instructional and budgetary decisions being based on the application of these principles of continuous improvement. I'm reminded that, you know, improvement science really came out of the healthcare sector. And we are, of course, impatiently patient in SAC City Unified. But in fact, this is our second year. And what you'll find in the research about improvement science over time is that it does take about six, seven years. But we are going to continue to strive for reducing the time by which our board and our community will see better outcomes on behalf of our students through the disciplined approach that we're trying to take. So I also want to appreciate the board's commitment. I think that our board has also leaned in in trying to become a more expert in 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 what improvement science and continuous improvement looks like. And I know that this isn't a matter of just adopting the vernacular of of improvement science, but but really more fully understanding what we're striving to do on behalf of our students and families.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. This is an action item and a roll call vote. Can we please have a second?
Second.
Superintendent Aguilar, will you please call roll?
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
Member Ryan?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimously adopted. Moving on to item 10.3, Adopt Fiscal Year 2021 Proposed Budget for All Funds and Education Protection Account. I want to remind the public who is listening that there is no designation of funds for SAC PD in the budget that we are seeking to adopt tonight, but a $600,000 line item that would be at the charge of a community group that I'll talk a bit more about after our presentation, really tasked with developing the expenditure of those funds.
Okay, good evening, President Ryan, Board Members, Superintendent and members of the public. Tonight, we're going to be presenting to you the for adoption, the proposed 2020, 2021 budget, which we shared in greater detail last week during the public hearing. My next slide, please. And this is the agenda for this evening. We're going to go over the budget agreement. As you all know, there was a budget agreement that was arrived at earlier this week between the governor and the legislature with some, you know, pretty major changes from May revise, and we'll touch on those briefly. And then we're going to go into the proposed budget for the coming year, along with the multi-year projections, the summary, and then move into the adoption of the budget. So the next slide, here are some of the key items that will make a significant difference to the district's budget and many other districts throughout California. The first item is the 0% COLA. Although we are not getting a positive COLA, it's better than what we were looking at or facing with the May revise governor's budget, which was including a negative 7.92% COLA. That would have been devastating to the district because it would have reduced our LCFF revenue significantly from the prior year by about 32 million. So this is good news for the district, but it's still, we got to remember, less than what we were projecting to get at second interim when we were looking at the governor's January proposed budget, which did include a COLA of about 2.29%. That would have meant an additional 10 million for the district in the coming year, which we really did need because we were still, at that time, when we were looking at that positive COLA, projecting a shortfall, we were still needing a budget solution of about 27, 28 million dollars. So just want to remind everyone of that. Now, how did the budget figure out a way to remove the deficit? Well, they increased the cash deferrals. The offset is four and a half months of cash deferrals in the 2020, 21 year, starting in February of next year. So this is going to have a negative impact on cash flow, obviously. For the district, roughly looking at, just, you know, running some numbers, it's pushing out cash by about 150, 160 million. Once we know all the details and we can update the budget and really run the numbers through our cash flow, we'll have a much, much better, accurate number for you in terms of cash flow. And the other was, the other big one was the additional federal and state revenues. This should say federal and state. This is the the allocation called the Learning Loss Mitigation Funds, which is funding districts under three allocation. One is for special ed, one is using the district's supplemental and concentration funding, and the third is using the district's LCFF funding. This is good news. This is more money for the district, but it is one-time money. We want to just, again, put that out there. But nonetheless, you know, we do welcome any relief funding that we can get. And then the other big one was the August certificated layoff provision. That's been removed, along with some restrictions on the classified layoffs on categories. And I think those were shared earlier in a different presentation. So in our next slide, we go over a little bit, what does this mean for SAC City specifically? Although we don't have specific details, there's some information out there that we were able to get in order to provide you with some some specific dollar amount that are projections at this point. And again, just a reminder that although this is better than May revise, it still doesn't fix our fiscal problem, right? We're still facing that same budget solution and maybe a little more than what we, you know, than prior to, than with addition, with these additional improvements of the agreed-upon budget. So again, the definite details are not yet available, but School Services did provide us with some estimates on what this additional mitigation funding would look like for the district. So for special ed, it would look like we would get about $12 million, 12.4 under the supplemental concentration allocation, it'd be an additional 6.3. And under that LCFF allocation, it'd be about 21 million. So in total, it'd be about $40 million in one-time funds, which is nice. That's a very nice big chunk of change. And so more to come on that. And these are the unknowns. Next slide, please. So these are some of the unknowns that we're waiting for details in order to really revise our budget and understand the true impact. As far as the Learning Loss Mitigation Funds, the restrictions are, does this mean then that we have to build in an additional $39 million in expenses to offset that $39 million in one-time funds? So we're waiting for those types of details to unfold and the spend date. Is it definitely going to be December 31, 20? We're hearing so far, yes. But again, until the budget, you know, is definitely enacted and we see those details, it's really hard to say that that's that's going to be the final spend date because that will then make a big difference in terms of our cash flow, right? Because that means that we're going to have to show all of that revenue and we're going to have to show the expenses spent by that date. And then the other is the allocation date. When can we actually expect to have these funds on hand, especially given the deferrals? And then the unknown for the 0% COLA for LCFF is that, is this only the 0% for next year? Do we apply this to our out-years? And this is going to, again, impact our multi-year projections and determining what that is going to look like for the out-years in terms of our ending fund balances. So because of these unknowns, it's very difficult to provide you with an accurate cash flow based on these improvements at this point in time. We can just speculate and, you know, we've run a couple of scenarios just to see, okay, assuming the 0% COLA is for all years and assuming we have to spend it, the the deferrals do play a role negatively for the district, meaning that it does have an impact in cash. Because I shared earlier, those deferrals, adding those extra months in there, will mean that the district will not see about 150 million, 140 million cash next year. And so that's one of our biggest problems. But again, these are just very broad rush projections because we need those details to give you a better indication of what the district is going to look like with these improvements. So this next slide, please, thank you. The state, so as you know, the state, the governor is scheduled to to sign the budget by June 30, which is next week, early next week. And although that, you know, the budget will be signed and will be enacted, we know that the state is going to revise their budget. They will revise it based on the July tax collections and then the actual federal aid that will be, that the state will be receiving. And so once that happens, then the districts, like all districts in the state, we will all formally revise our our budgets and bring that back. And just like we did in this presentation, formally. And when we say formally, we mean all the SAC forms and all of the filing forms that go with with a formal district budget. But this does not mean that we're going to stop at this point in time and not provide you with updates. We will continue to provide updates as information unfolds. It'll just be projections based on what's coming out of the state in terms of trailer bills or definite information on on the COLAs for the out-years or the restrictions that are going to be placed on that additional mitigation loss funding. And so we hope that, you know, that information starts to unfold in the coming days. And especially right after those July tax collections, we do expect to see some information coming from the state. And then we can just quickly run some scenarios and provide you with that information until we have time to really develop the full-blown formal budget that we'll be bringing back to you for for approval. And so with that, then, we go into the proposed budget. And again, we're not providing you with all the same details you saw last week. As we shared last week, this was a tentative budget because it is based on May revise until the state does take action. And we know already that that is going to look different than May revise. And then at which time, you know, we can update our multi-year projections and our cash flows more accurately. And so a formal budget revision will be coming your way for approval by way of a board, a board presentation in August or September, as soon as we have that information from the state. But again, in the meantime, we will continue to provide you with budget updates as, you know, information becomes available. And so our next slide, as you've seen this, this is from last week. Just to recap on our multi-year projections, show, you know, again, using May revise and showing how our ending fund balance looks pretty bad in that third year. And we know this will change drastically. And thank you, President Ryan. I was going to emphasize here again, there's been a lot of conversation about the Safe Schools budget and what is included in there. You're absolutely correct. The $600,000 is in the budget, but it's simply allocated at this point in time just to contracts object code. And that can be revised. At this point in time, the district has not entered into any agreements for that $600,000 whatsoever. That's pretty typical for most of our agreements is that we wait until our budget is adoption before we enter into any other agreement. And our next slide is a summary. So again, the budget is based on the May revise. And knowing that we will be changing this, our opportunities, as we shared last time, were that, you know, we were hoping for some additional federal and state relief, which we know is now included in the agreement, and the additional LCFF funding. Although it's not additional money, at least it's not the reduction of the 7.92% that we were looking at. And then finally, you know, how quickly can the state's economy recover and hopefully start to even provide districts with better, better funding? The risks are that we still have to get a handle on what our COVID-19 costs will look like, especially as we go into opening schools and returning more and more of our workforce. And then we don't know, the other big unknown for us right now is the impact on our future healthcare costs. We are already hearing that we should expect to see increases in those health benefits. And we're waiting for our providers to provide us with some calculations based on what they're learning. And as soon as that information becomes available, we will definitely share that with you. So just a short presentation, just to bring you up to speed on the latest as far as the budget deal. And so we're waiting now just for for the details to unfold from that. And at this point, I will turn it over to questions and then we move into adopting the budget for the 2021 school year.
Okay, so what we're going to do with this item, given this is the board budget adoption item for a broad range of budget line items, we are going to take questions and comments from board members. And then we are going to go to our 30 minutes of public comments. I want to remind those listening and our colleagues that we have, for the first time, archived each and every one of the hundreds of public comments that we received today. Board members have them. It's been incredibly helpful to be able to read through them. So if we aren't able to get through every comment, as I said earlier, or if a comment is cut off due to time limitations, we have, for the first time, an archived copy of all public commentary. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and ask for board members to raise their hand if they have comments and questions. Board Member Pritchett and Board Member Morowski, sorry, Board Member Garcia, Board Member Morowski. I don't know if you raised your hand first. I couldn't see it quite clearly.
Thank you, President Ryan, and thank you, Rose, for that presentation. I know tonight we are voting on the budget, but I do feel like I need to say something. Not since school closures have I felt so conflicted over a board decision. I've actually lost a lot of sleep this week and feel physically ill. I recognize and I stand in solidarity to solidarity to support our Black and Brown students, but I'm also grappling with the responsibility of a board member to keep our kids safe. You see, I represent an area that is not covered by Sacramento PD. It's an unincorporated area in the county, a little pocket between three cities, the city of Sacramento, the city of Rancho Cudopah and the city of Elk Grove. In fact, I have three schools that are primarily in the city of Rancho Cudopah. And when violence occurs at one of my sites, as it often does, hall monitors and staff try their best with their well-meaning, trying to get this, get it under control. But then we have to rely on the patrol officers of Sacramento Sheriff's Department to come out. Ask yourselves a question. What happens when the Sacramento Sheriff's Department is deployed to one of our school sites? Or just in our communities? We know what happens. Our communities have written about this and sent us emails and phone calls and all about, and rage over this. Last year, we heard the community's cries to defend the police, and we did. We pulled all of our SROs off of our campuses. We cut the contract to only three roaming emergency response SROs. We hired a new safety director under the community hiring panel. Before we could even assess and decide if this is working, the board is being called to totally divest without a plan. Many groups have sent us examples of other school districts like Denver that's divesting. Denver is just doing right now what we did a year ago by removing school-based officers and seeking to divest by the year of 2022. I'm deeply concerned that we are being asked to take a budget action without a roadmap for how to keep our students safe. I've heard from my, some of my board colleagues and community members asking for this funding to be used for hiring more social workers and hall monitors. We are talking roughly $600,000. That's not a lot of money for 70-plus sites. This would cover the cost of four, maybe five positions for our entire district. We need a bigger plan. I want to thank President Ryan for calling for a safety group. I think it is a really good start. With that, I'm asking that the work group that she's calling- With that, I'm asking that the work group that she's calling for to develop a common definition for school safety is part of their plan. School safety is not prevention alone. It is also intervention. And I'm troubled that it all seems to be lost in these conversations. Additionally, given the unique challenges of the schools in my county jurisdiction, I'm, I want to ask once again that at least one member of the work group that is part of this represents my area. I am prepared to approve this budget tonight with the understanding that we bring safety to the forefront. And there is not going to be a lag to discuss how we need to keep our students safe and that we will also bring law enforcement into these discussions. We have a responsibility to our students to keep our students and our staff safe. If we don't get this right, the headlines could be devastating. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Pritchett. I do want to encourage our board members to broaden their budget comments and questions, given this is the budget adoption for our comprehensive budget for Sacramento City Unified School District. And so we can certainly speak to the divestment of SROs and express either concerns or support for the budget that we are voting on that does not include that SAC PD contract. But I also think it's really critical that we address some of the other elements of the budget, given the gravity of our fiscal predicament and what we heard from, you know, Rose just now, that while things have improved, they have not improved to the level of ensuring that we are no longer going to find ourselves cash insolvent and are in a position where we are reinvesting in new positions and all of the critical supports that we know are vital to being able to meet the needs of students across the district. So Board Member Garcia, next, followed by Board Member Morowski.
Yes, so thank you. I do have a few questions and I'll start with the clarifying question. The thirty nine million dollar in additional revenue potentially. Did I hear that that is one-time money, even though it's LCFF and special ed dollars? Is that, is that correct? I, I don't see the slides anymore, so.
Yes, yes, Member Garcia, that is correct. At this point in time, it's one-time dollars. And the reason we have LCFF and supplemental listed here, and I probably should have clarified a little, that a little better. It's based on our twenty nineteen twenty LCFF allocations. They're using that as a basis to calculate our share. So across the state, they're taking, they're looking at districts and whatever our LCFF-based funding was. They're applying a formula to that to arrive at our particular number. And they did the same thing with supplemental concentration. It's based on our twenty nineteen twenty allocation and they apply some formula, which I haven't seen yet. So I'm not, I can't tell you it was this amount per ADA. And those are the kinds of details that we're waiting for. But school services did provide this. So we're, you know, I'm pretty sure that they have some information to be able to come up to these amounts. And the same is true for special ed. It's based on our, our special ed count, our fall count of twenty nineteen to come up with that dollar amount.
Okay, so I, I think that's going to be an important distinction moving forward. I know today's budget is just a tentative sort of budget that we're adopting. But there's a big difference, right, between one-time money and, and ongoing dollars and how that impacts the overall budget. So thank you for that clarification. I, you know, we did buy what, four point five months in terms of of solvency, but still the running out of cash is still a very clear and present danger, right? We are, we're just buying one month at a time. So, so it's, it's that, that is obviously something that is very concerning. So, so I just have two more questions. So what, my follow-up question to that is, when will we see concrete proposals to address the structural deficit? Are we going to see that in August when we see a revised, when we're going to vote on a revised budget after the state takes action and, and then they revise their own budget? When will we start as a board, start to see more concrete proposals to really start addressing that structural deficit?
You mean concrete proposals by way of?
How, how we're going to identify savings?
Yeah, well, that's a good question. I'm, I've I believe that our negotiating team is working on some proposals. Possibly something will come of that as far as like, and I apologize if I'm a little bit, you know, at a loss for words here. But I'm struggling to answer as far as identifying additional reductions within the budget. Is that?
Well, I, I just think that, you know, there are some parallel conversations that are taking place. One is on the negotiation side, but then we also need to figure out what other efforts are being made outside of the negotiations process in terms of, you know, arriving at, at addressing the structural deficit. And so, so just trying to figure out when we're going to start addressing, right, that, that big, that, that that big issue that we have to address. And I, I don't know if I'm superintendent, you wanted to, I see you nodding, so I don't know if you want to say something. And I do have one last question after that.
Yeah, absolutely, Member Garcia. I think what we would like to do is just make sure that as, as more details of the budget are known and we come back. I know that you and others have requested, we, we do have plans to come back with our best calculation for the July board meeting, even though we won't have a full context around tax revenues and such, but come back with, with an updated cash flow for the July board meeting. And at that point, give you more specifics about how these parallel tracks that you mentioned might intersect at some point as we're trying to achieve some savings through the negotiations process. Have more information about what school reopening might look like, where there might be some opportunities for potential savings, depending on what that reopening plan looks like as well. So we, we will bring back as, as much as we can for the July board meeting and, and continue to do so into September, once we know the, what, what the tax revenues look like for, for the July fifteenth deadline.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think it's just really important that we just continue to make progress in, you know, negotiations is one thing, but we need other plans and, and efforts to address that structural deficit. And my last question is, Rose, if you, if you can provide, or I don't know, superintendent, maybe, if you can share some information in terms of the parent participation preschool program. We heard a lot of public comments, not only at the last board meeting, but this meeting in terms of where that particular effort is and if anything that you can share tonight for those parents who are listening. Because again, this is a budget that we're adopting. It's tentative, but just maybe even clarify whether or not that particular program is in this budget. So.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Well, the first thing that I want to say is just thank you to the many parents that have come together to form a very important stakeholder group. I know that this program has a, 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 a very longstanding legacy and is very well regarded. I've learned about it by visiting the program and have been very inspired by the deep commitment from parents that have participated and have benefited in the program. We have been working with a group of parent stakeholders that have brought forward several proposals and iterations of proposals as early, as late as a few days ago that we are feeling more and more confident as we talk to them about the potential for that program to be a self-sustaining program. Earlier this week, we also, Member Pritchett has worked on this effort and we submitted a proposal for three hundred thousand dollars to see if we can bring in additional resources to help sustain and lower the pressure that, that goes into creating a self-sustaining effort, of course. We have calculated that in order for the program to be fully self-sustaining, it would require a little over two hundred parent participants. Just a reminder that parents are the students in that program. And, and that's what makes it so unique. It is funded through the adult school program, which, which just by, by, by its very nature needs to, needs to rely less on our unrestricted general funds. All to say that we continue to meet with them and, and, and at this point, I feel fairly confident that things are going to look good for that program to become self-sustaining. I know it's something that the parents have been calling for. Always, always anxious about a program that, that, that we think can be self-sustaining, not becoming self-sustaining, but you know, we, we will cross that road. But I do think that it's important to commend the, the many parents who have come forward and have leaned in and, and have been thinking outside the box, coming up with various proposals. Again, I will, I will keep the, the board updated on that program because a decision will have to be made before June thirtieth. And, and would be happy to come back also and provide another update at our July board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. Board Member Morowski.
Thank you, President Ryan. I am very glad to know that we will get an updated cash flow statement in, in July. And I, I really appreciate that. I think we need to keep very close track of that. So I appreciate that. And then again, in August or September, hopefully August. Because I think, I think we need to, I know it's a balance of trying to incorporate the COVID-related expenditures and we may not know what those are, but if we can get that done sooner than, than September, I think that's appropriate as we're, you know, we're, we're needing to, you know, really have meaningful board approval of, of a budget. And I think, given COVID and given the federal dollars that are, that are going to be available, I think we really need to think about how, you know, how we are spending them and have, and have board input and community input on that. Let's see. So I guess I, I am, I am still, I am still really concerned about our budget picture. So it was, it was horrific or is horrific, the budget we're adopting based on May revise. And given the, the budget agreement that the legislature and the governor have breached, it's just bad. Not horrific, but it's still bad. So I think we, we need to keep that in mind, as Ms. Ramos said. And also, the, what concerns me is the federal dollars. If we have to use those by December, I, I don't even know how we do that. So that seems, that seems unrealistic to me. I mean, in terms of the things we would want to do for COVID, might be hiring more nurses for the whole year. That wouldn't be something that, you know, we would be able to spend by December. So I think, you know, as, as soon as we get clarity about that, that will make a huge difference in terms of whether that's even really helpful for our budget picture over, over the year for the things we will, we likely need. I also think there's a risk in terms of, you know, what we've even seen in the last week or so on COVID nineteen. This is, it's on an exponential growth chart, if you, if you've seen in many states. And, you know, our country seems too broken to really be able to fix this. And, and I, you know, it, so it looks, it looks like we're on a very bad trajectory. If that is the case, then the economy, you know, will, will be severely at risk and we will be having a very, a very bad next couple of years in terms of the, the state fiscal picture. So I think we need to do, as we come back, we need to, to do everything we can to be in the best fiscal place we can in terms of, in terms of reserves because there's just way too much risk on the horizon to do anything else. So that would be my, I guess, my direction as we, as we consider going forward. One thing I was wondering about, and I had, I had asked and we didn't get a chance to talk about it prior to this, but you know, we did, we did pass Measure H and our communities supported overwhelmingly, you know, making facility improvements. I know, you know, it may be a little early, but I feel like we're already too late in some ways, just given reality. But there, you know, there are potentially things that we could do, facility improvements that we might want to make that might help us deal with the COVID situation. You know, one, one thing I'm thinking about is like outdoor classrooms. That might be something that, that could, you know, help us have enough space to physically distance and so forth. So I really want to make sure we're thinking about whether, whether some of those facility improvements might, might become a part of, of our budget picture for next year. I don't know if you have any comments or have, have thought about that.
Just a comment, Member Morowski, good question on that. And we always do, we always look for our bond funds since they are, they are pretty restricted. So whenever we have a facility expense that comes up and maybe it wasn't planned, we look at, at the bond language and we look at the criteria. And if it can fit and the funding is going to be available and it's not going to disrupt a planned project, then we do consider that as an option. So yeah, and we've been thinking about that as well, along with many other districts who are fortunate enough to have bond funds, is that, you know, what's the possibility of using this as a go-to for that so that we can alleviate the pressure on our regular general fund?
Oh, yeah, I think for anything that's, that's bond fund, you know, eligible, that's certainly a, a, a good strategy. I'm also just thinking about new facility improvements that we might need to or might want to make for, you know, to help us with the COVID situation, including outdoor classrooms. So I just, I, I guess I look forward to continuing that conversation over the next few weeks.
Yeah, no, thank you, Member Morowski. I think you make some excellent points. And Rose and Nathaniel, you know, on that note, this issue of appropriate ventilation keeps on coming up. And so, you know, do we have the ability to do an assessment of ventilation and the ability to accelerate the use of Measure H dollars towards that end? Because we know that that will be one of the critical strategies for containing spread should, should with extraordinary precautions in place, that not be enough. So I absolutely appreciate that comment. I also really share the concern over the ambiguity with the federal COVID relief dollars, both, you know, understanding if we have to expend them by the end of the year and recognizing that that really ties our hands in terms of the innovative policies and interventions that we can put in place to meet our most vulnerable students where they're at when they return to school in whatever form that is in the fall. And, you know, I, I wonder, you know, Rose, as you're gaining greater clarity, what are you doing to talk about, you know, if the reality is the dollars need to be expended by the end of December and you have little flexibility, what can we do recognizing the very real trauma that our students have experienced and the remediation needs of what in essence is going to be a half a year of lost learning with civil rights advocates across the state, you know, demonstrating early data that shows that Black, Latinx and On Piece students have suffered the most as a result of distance learning and the COVID crisis. And so, you know, thinking of how we use those dollars, even if we don't have the ability to use them for the lifespan of the school year, how do we front load them in a way that is intentional and deals with some of these issues of inequities perpetuated by mental fatigue, trauma and remediation needs that are accelerated due to the COVID crisis? And so I would just ask that of you. I also, you know, recognize that this is a tentative budget that we're adopting and that we're going to have to, based on the revised projections, revenue that comes in, make adjustments this summer. But I do want to ask, Rose, you know, you are such an expert in the field. Have you been able to develop at all any ranges? So based on the data that you've seen, based on based on the budget that we believe is adopted, will be adopted by Governor Newsom, and I think actually was a few hours ago, you know, is there a range that you're anticipating we will see in terms of additional revenue?
The additional revenue will be, well, obviously, I can't say it's additional revenue, but we won't see that negative, that cut to LCFF. And we'll see the $39 million roughly in the one-time funds. And the other would be probably just that... Well, they're not, no, it's not additional revenue because I just keep going back to May revised, and they were all reductions to all of our categoricals. So if anything, it spares us from having a worse ending fund balance than we're projecting. But I'm not really seeing additional revenue other than the relief fund for COVID, and which is one time as far as we know right now. And then the mitigation loss revenue money as well.
So the cuts are not as catastrophic as we had thought. But essentially, we are only a few months further from cash insolvency. And so we cannot become complacent, is what you're saying.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Rose, I appreciate it. Do we have any other board member questions or comments? Okay, we're going to go to public comment at this time.
Okay, so these will be one minute each. And the first comment is from Marcus Miller. And it says, hello, I'm a Black parent who just moved into the... AIDS, a Black parent of a soon-to-be school-aged child in the SCUSD district. I am calling on Christina Pritchett specifically and the SCUSD Board as a whole to not renew their contract with the Sacramento Police Department as a part of the plan to reimagine school safety. The presence of armed law enforcement in institutions of child learning and development for any reason is distracting at best, inappropriate on average, and uniquely dangerous and debilitating to the bodies, minds, and futures of students of color, poor, and disabled students at worst. Trustee Pritchett, do not make the same mistake you did in November again today with the backdrop of our nation's reassessment of the very purpose and role of law enforcement currently underway. I ask that you and the other trustees find a different way to ensure the safety and well-being of our children on school grounds. The next comment is from Robbie Riles and says, funding is precious and it needs to go toward supporting our students, mental health services, counselors, disability services, career services, MESA, SESI, et cetera, instead of SROs or any partnership with police. I wish it weren't so, but the recent killings of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor rest in power are a reminder of an unsafe levels of police brutality in our country. Very rarely do students feel that they can trust and confide in members outside of their community, especially a stranger showing up with a badge and a gun. That is one of the most terrifying things that could happen to our youth when they are in need of support, someone they don't know showing up with a badge and a gun. It's clear that those who will be most effective in supporting and connecting with students are the people within the campus community who know them the best. It is my understanding... The next comment is from Anna Garson. And it says, I urge you to end the contract, allow police in schools. Police are not a strategy for managing children, especially in spaces of education. I ask you to pledge a permanent end to policing in schools with a plan to reinvest those funds into mental health and education support for our youth. Any plan that is implemented should be done so with community input, support, and partnership. Finally, I ask you all to reject campaign funds from police unions. There is no place for police union money in elections, particularly for our local officials here in Sacramento. The next comment is from Laura Blosser and it says, end the police contract now. Next comment is from Shawna Atherton-Bauer and says, schools are no place for police officers. To that end, I call on the board to turn your words into action. I call on you all to publicly pledge an immediate and permanent end to police contracts, reinvest safety funds into mental health student support services, design and implement an alternative safety plan with community input and partnership, publicly pledge not to take money from police unions. Thank you for your time. Next comment is from Jashalin Arbolida and says, end police contracts allocated to mental health and homeless outreach. The next comment is from Petra Lee. Says, hello, my niece is a student at Theodore Judah, and I am concerned about police officers in schools. Can you please end the contract and work with students and parents to come up with a less destructive solution than police? Please don't take money from police unions for your campaign either. That's just a lousy thing to do to our kids. I also hope you'll publicly vow to end police in schools forever and not subject our Black and Brown students to the disproportionate harm. Next comment is from Josephine Vander Clay and says, I urge the board members to vote against the use of police officers or quote, "student resource officers," unquote, in all Sacramento District schools and reallocate their funds towards more counselors, teachers, student resources and equipment, school nurses and therapists, and anti-bullying campaigns that actually work. The next comment is from Courtney Poole and says, I am demanding that you publicly pledge an immediate and permanent end to police contracts, reinvest safety funds into mental health student supports, design and implement an alternative safety plan with community input and partnership, and publicly pledge not to take campaign money from police unions. As a social worker, I see the need for more school social workers and student support staff to address social, emotional needs of our city's more valuable asset, our young people. The next comment is from Carmen Hamon and says, end police contracts, defund police takeaway budget. Susan Solomon says, use the money spent on police in our schools for more appropriate social services. Remove money for police contracts from the budget. Leanna Moreno says, please use our school funds for more mental health professionals, not more police officers on campus. Fanya Swift says, hello. As a parent in a district with no librarians and few, if any, counselors, I would appreciate your consideration in removing S.A.SAC PD from our campuses and utilizing that money for educational and emotional support of our children. This is a critical moment in history. Look to cities like Minneapolis, Portland, Oakland, and see that policing our children only adds intimidation and authoritarianism when a learning environment must be inspirational and supportive. Thank you for your time, proceed wisely. The next comment is from Natalie Graves. And it says, turn your words into action and publicly pledge an immediate and permanent end to public contracts, reinvest safety funds into mental health student supports, design and implement an alternative safety plan with community input and partnership, and publicly pledge not to take campaign money from police unions. The next comment is from Christina Phillip and says, I want SCUSD to: 1. Publicly pledge an immediate and permanent end to police contracts; 2. Reinvest safety funds into mental health student supports; 3. Design and implement an alternative safety plan with community input and partnership; 4. SCUSD to publicly pledge not to take campaign money from police unions. Police presence is not what our children need. Police are not trained to deal with compassion or to humanize. Police have tunnel vision to only see criminals with everyone they encounter. So how do you trust that presence around our children? What good has come out of having police presence with our children and criminalizing them? The school-to-prison pipeline is real. We need to realize what we are doing isn't working and need to regroup and restructure how we support our children. Our children need compassion and guidance. They need the presence of those trained in counseling, mentoring, and nonviolent de-escalation. The next comment is from Alice Walker and says, turn your words into action. Please publicly pledge an end to police contracts, reinvest safety funds into mental health student supports, and design and implement an alternative safety plan with community input. Please also publicly pledge to not take campaign money from police unions. End the contracts now. Caitlin O'Brien says, hello, I'm commenting to urge you all to publicly pledge an immediate and permanent end to police contracts. Instead, I urge you to reinvest safety funds into mental health support for students. Instead of contributing more funds to the historically racist and useless police force, you can design and implement an alternative safety plan with community input and partnership. Please do not take money from police unions. You have the opportunity to set an example for the rest of the state, country, and world. Please do the right thing, we are watching. The next comment is from Noel Lekembe and says, decrease the police budget and invest in our communities by funding services that strengthen our communities. I demand the funding go towards social services, physical and mental health care, accessible public transit, housing, quality education, parks, access to food, and support to underserved communities instead of placing police directly into communities with the majority of BIPOC causing a vulnerability to violence. Nuter your communities and keep those at risk safe instead of targeting them. The next comment is from Johanna Overletta and says, end police contracts, reform police department funds. Joanna Gallagher says, as I wrote last week, as a teacher in SCUSD, I urge you to divest from SACPD and to invest in counselors, social workers, art, music, and restorative justice practices. The next comment is from Sharon Flicker and says, investment in SROs is harming our children. End the SRO contract and invest that money instead in mental health support for students. Commit to stop taking campaign money from police unions. Create an alternative safety plan with community input. Stephanie Young says, the police needs to be divested from to fortify any community agencies, professionals, and all other forms of systems that provide support to our families and youth. We must end the school-to-prison pipeline that is perpetrated by the presence of police in our schools and neighborhoods. We must address and counter white supremacy at all levels in our society. It is very present in the educational system as state-sanctioned public officers are used to police our children in schools. This needs to stop immediately and is completely unacceptable. The next comment is from Elp Fairman and says, I, along with Sacramento-area congregations together, stand with our students who are negatively impacted by police interactions in their school campuses and who are leading the effort to denounce institutional racism in our education system. It is vital that the SCUSD Board of Education: 1. Adopt a board resolution to put a final end to current and future contracts with law enforcement; 2. Institute an alternative safety plan designed collaboratively with students, parents, teachers, and community for the school year 2020, 2021; 3. Reinvest safety funds in academic and mental health counselors, social workers, bilingual staff, campus monitors, and student supports; 4. Make a public pledge not to take any money from police unions for their political campaigns as a stance against their history of institutional racism. The next comment is from Molly Rea and says, SCUSD and our community has shown since the onset of COVID how they can, in fact, act swiftly in response to crises. Racism is a crisis and has been in existence for years, decades, centuries. SROs do not lead to safety for students, and it is time, in response to the crisis of racism, to respond accordingly and promptly. I believe in your ability to make a comprehensive plan for appropriate, trauma-informed, and responsive mental health care services for students, services that actually support and empower students instead of fear-mongering and traumatizing them. You have the power and the tools to make this change happen now. You hold the purse strings. I implore you to fully cut the contracts with police departments, remove SROs from all SAC City schools, invest in mental health services. Danielle Waldeman says, enter contract with Sacramento PD, divest from SPD, do not hire SROs, invest in community care and community accountability now. Dana O'Donnell says, the community calls for action. Police out of schools now, no empty promises. Our students deserve better. Christine Kozlowski says, please end the police contract with SCUSD. I do not believe that overpolicing keeps our students safe, and I want the funds reinvested into mental health and other services for SCUSD students. Robin Ayers says, I am writing as a concerned citizen and a social worker who works with families in the SAC City USD. I am asking that in considering the district budget that the board canceled the contract for SAC PD and use any funds intended for them to be used for professionals who will provide nurturing, culturally competent care and concern for the students at each of your schools. As a community, we cannot continue to surround our young people with police and criminalize them during this important time of development in their lives. We must support and strengthen our youth, and a budget that includes police in our schools does not accomplish that. I am demanding your unconditional support for a student-centered budget, which will not include a line item for police, or rather build up a robust support system for all SCUSD students. Jolene Russell says, publicly pledge an immediate and permanent end to police contracts, reinvest safety funds into mental health student supports, design and implement an alternative safety plan with community input and partnership, publicly pledge not to take campaign money from police unions. And the 30th comment is from Mathias Kimball and says, I am urging the school board to remove SROs from our schools and use that funding to provide health and support services to students and their families. I also demand that they stop taking any campaign donations from police unions or other law enforcement organizations. And so that was the 30 comments out of the 276 on this item.
And Anne, thank you for reading those. Those are all archived online at the SCUSD website, correct? In their entirety, thank you.
Yes, yes, they are.
Thank you, I just want to make sure that we had clarified that. So, you know, in closing out this item, we can take some final comments from board members. Looks like we didn't have public comment on other items related to the budget. Primarily, the focus was on the commitment to divest the remaining $600,000 from the non-school site, three SROs, and reinvest those monies. Now, the reinvestment of money is when you find yourself in the fiscal circumstances that SCUSD currently is encountering becomes much more difficult. But what we asked Rose to do and what you saw tonight was a set aside of those $600,000 to be reinvested under an alternative school safety strategy. What I am directing the superintendent to do tonight is to, by the end of July, launch the establishment of an alternative school safety strategy task force. Under that task force, we would do a few critical things. One, we would focus on determining a common definition for student and school safety. Two, we would be looking at a process that is community-driven and involves our LCAP parents, our CAC, our DLEC, our labor representatives, including UPE, SCTA, SEIU, and some community-based organizations, as well as SAC City staff, to develop a comprehensive alternative safety strategy, recognizing the limitations of the $600,000 we have to... to spend. That comprehensive alternative school safety plan would include strategies for promoting anti-racist school discipline policies. What I will tell you has been most both astonishing to me, but also remarkable is that in the conversations I've been having over the last few weeks with my community, with civil rights partners, with leaders in this space, they have said by divesting in the three remaining SRO, you are making a statement, but you will not dismantle institutional racism by doing that alone. And so there is this commitment to developing an alternative safety plan that ensures both through prevention and intervention, we are protecting our students and promoting a positive campus climate. But what we cannot forget is that a true commitment to anti-racist practices and to upending historical inequities in our education system and a school-to-prison pipeline recognizes that in particular for Black students beginning in preschool, they are disproportionately kicked out of classrooms due to behaviors that are deemed to be inappropriate when quite often they are the same behaviors that are being exhibited in their white peers. And what we often don't want to discuss because it makes us uncomfortable is that once those disciplinary actions are taken, it leaves a legacy not just of breaking the spirit and creating trauma and mental health issues in our children, but it also teaches their classmates to view them as bad, as potentially not individuals that they would want to act, interact with, and as, as peers that will be treated differently from that point forward. We know based on the SAC City data that our students, in particular if they're Black and Latinx students as well as on-peace students, are less likely to read at grade level by third grade. And what that means in terms of lifetime earnings, the ability to pursue a college degree, and the ability to break intergenerational poverty. And so as we're making a commitment to take this bold action and move away from an investment with SROs, we have to be as courageous and as focused in dismantling systemic inequities by recognizing the role systemic racism plays in the classroom, on the school site, and at every level of our education system. And if we believe by this action alone, we are going to meet the needs of a community that has for far too long been left behind, then we are doing our community a grave disservice and fooling ourselves in saying that our commitment to dismantling institutional racism is going to be a core guiding North Star of this board. So, you know, I'm asking for the July board meeting, as I shared earlier. We will not be having a hiatus in the month of July. Rather, we will be coming back to the district to have a July board meeting focused on the reopening of schools. Within that, we will have a resolution which outlines the items that I just talked about regarding the alternative school safety plan and the task at hand to ensure that we are charging that group of stakeholders that is representative of multiple key constituencies within our SAC City community with the ability to help inform how $600,000 is spent to the end of promoting school safety and ensuring that we are pursuing anti-racist school discipline policies. And I know we have a couple hands, Board Member Vang, Board Member Murawski.
Thanks, President Ryan. First, I just want to say thank you so much for pulling this item from the budget that we're going to be voting on tonight. So I really appreciate your leadership on this. And I'm also glad to hear that, and if I heard that correctly for clarification, that a resolution will be brought to the board in, in July. Did I hear that correctly? Okay, yeah, because I think just given some of the concerns around timeline from parents, students, and community members, I was also going to make a request that SAC City actually present a resolution next month stating our intent, not just about the SRO or canceling the contract, but really our commitment to begin that work to dismantle a harmful system, right? And so if we could make sure, and I'd be happy to also help co-lead to write that resolution with you as well. And so I just wanted to add that. The other piece I just really wanted to say because I think, and I want to thank Member Pritchett for sharing her truth and, you know, just, just her perspective on this issue. And I, I, you know, want to have a dialogue with her and also our board members to say, you know, that, you know, Member Pritchett, that, that I hear you and that, you know, I, I understand that, you know, the schools that you represent are within county jurisdiction, right? And that's concerning, right? Because, you know, our students may be treated differently on the county side. And I think, you know, when you spoke earlier, your worry about how our students would be treated from the county side. And I would say, then join the fight to demilitarize law enforcement, right? And I also want to say, I've heard from parents who are also scared, and I want to say, you know, it's okay to admit that you're scared to imagine a world without law enforcement because that's all we've ever known. But this is an opportunity for us to build the world that we want. And that no one is ever going to do this alone. We're all going to need each other, right? And so I just, you know, wanted to say that to you and, and thank you for speaking your truth. And hope that we can continue to do this work to really dismantle a system that, that has hurt many of our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Vang, Board Member Murawski.
Thanks, and I, I appreciate the, the robust discussion on this. I think it, I think it deserves it. There's, there's been a lot of commentary that would lead you to think that this is sort of a black and white issue. You know, there's two choices, and it's just really not that simple. So I think I, I appreciate, I appreciate everyone's perspective. So I support this, this move to an alternative safety plan, you know, using, using the district dollars. And I, you know, I, I, I think safety, you know, I, I think we need to be realistic about the, the fiscal situation we're in. And we have a, we have a, an absolute obligation to ensure the physical safety of our, our school staff and our students. So we can't, we can't pretend that, that it's something else. I mean, this, this is, this is a core fundamental thing. This is like the bottom of Maslow's hierarchy, right? This, so safety, you know, safety has to come, come first, and we need to be able to ensure that to, to the maximum, you know, degree reasonable. Our students obviously need more support staff, you know, we need more mental health clinicians. And, you know, some of these partnerships we've been working on, President Ryan, for, for over the last year or two are finally coming to fruition. But, but we, we know we need more of that. We know we need more support staff. We know our budget doesn't allow that at the moment until we solve our, our fiscal, our fiscal issues. So I think we need to be realistic that our students will, will, because we don't have a contract with SACPD for SROs to support our schools, that doesn't mean that our students will never interact with police, law enforcement at the school site. So I think we need to be realistic about that. You know, our schools are still part of the community, and if, you know, if someone calls 911, they're going to come, and they should. Because if safety, you know, is threatened in that, in that immediate moment, you know, they need, they need that support just like anyone else in the community. So I, you know, I would just say, I, I think we need to maintain the partnership, the, the, you know, maintain as best as we can protocols that make sense. And just, you know, and work with, with SACPD, with, I suppose, with the sheriff, Sheriff's Office. And, you know, to, to just make, make this as seamless as possible for our school communities. I think it's our, you know, we, we need to lead with honesty on this and, and just to talk about all the different aspects of it and not just think it's that simple to, to say, okay, we can get rid of SROs and we solved, we solved racism. I, I also, I, I also struggle to whether this is the right move that will protect our Black and Brown students the best because that when we don't have SROs, the, the law enforcement interaction is with law enforcement that's not specially trained to work with our students. So I do, you know, I do struggle with that. But, so I, you know, I would maybe recommend or, or encourage, you know, our city and law enforcement to think about whether they can expand training for, for their officers so that more, more of them are trained to deal with, with children and in, in the way that we would want them to interact with, with our kids. So I would just, you know, lastly, just echo President Ryan's comments about this, you know, that we can't, we can't say like mission accomplished. Reminds me of that, you know, the President Bush on the ship, mission accomplished after six weeks in Iraq. And, you know, that dragged on for many years. So I just, I guess I would put that, that challenge out to everyone listening, you know, who feels that this is, you know, this is the righteous thing because we're getting, we're getting SROs, you know. Well, they're already off of our campuses. We're canceling the contract or not, not recommitting to that. To just really commit that same energy and activism around ensuring that we dismantle those structures that, that really are also very impactful for our students in the classroom throughout the school sites that are manifestations of racial injustice just as well as, you know, as, as many people believe that SRO contract is. So, thank you. I appreciate, I just want to, one last real, real quick comment. I just want to thank President Ryan for the commitment to, to the, the needs of, of our Black and Brown kids, particularly to the African-American Achievement Task Force. And just as a person who is just, has done the work really over, over years, not just in a moment, not just in response to something, but over years, who has called for the African-American Achievement Task Force, who hustled the money to get that funded, who has participated in that over, you know, a year and a half and has been a champion for those issues, not just in a moment, but for the long haul. So I just, I want to, you know, just appreciate that and appreciate your continued commitment and the board's commitment to seeking justice.
Thank you, Member Murawski. Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you. I'll keep my comments brief. I, I want to thank everyone for having the courage to have this conversation. And, and as Board Member Vang said, and speaking our truth, right? We all have, we come from different backgrounds. We have different experiences. But we have to validate each other's experiences and acknowledge that. So, so I, I want to, I want to start with that. I did want to seek clarification on a couple of things moving into the proposal. So one is that a task force be, I guess, established by the end of July. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and just also to clarify, you named the sort of the membership of this, of the task force. I didn't hear a youth voice or a student voice. I'm wondering if, if there's, there is.
So, so I, I said the LCAP PAC, the CAC, the DLEC, the African-American Achievement Task Force, UPE, SCTA, SCIU, students, teachers, community groups. So, but I mean, there will be a resolution, so there will be an opportunity to provide feedback at that time.
Okay, great. And, and also the, the timeline in terms of when we expect to get some, to see something, recommendations or whatnot. So there's a beginning, but I feel like there's no sort of end date of when we should expect for something. Not to rush the work because I know it's the beginning of something completely different. It's a new way of ensuring, you know, school safety for the district and, and going even deeper than that with, with, with addressing some of the institutional racism. But I, I also want to make sure that there's an, there's an end date that we can see on the horizon. Because again, I, I, we know, we know what the, what the public comment that came from our community, from our students and, and, you know, and, and our, and, and, and others who really want to see some of these dollars go to other services that we know help students. And we know they help address some of the, the challenges, but also the, the trauma that are, that students will bring back to our schools when they start school. And how much greater and deeper that trauma is going to be and how much more widespread, right? Not only for Black and Brown students, but for all students experiencing the trauma of the pandemic and isolation and whatnot. So, so the sense of urgency that, that I have is to ensure that those dollars, I know they won't stay idle because, because there's, there's just so much need. But also not to sort of set them aside for a year when we know that there's tremendous need right now. So just to be cognizant of that, and again, maybe, maybe having some, an end date as to when we, when we could see the, the alternative safety plan. So, those are my comments.
Thank you for your feedback, Member Garcia. The superintendent and I have been calling some civil rights partners across the state and country as well as districts that have taken similar progressive action to find out if there's the potential for an organization that has a track record of this work facilitating this group. Because frankly, we do not have the staff capacity, as you know, to be able to, with the urgency that you're speaking, develop the kind of thoughtful plan that allows us to get those resources out the door. And much of what I've seen and many of the community groups shared with me are plans that, you know, go out even a couple of years before you really see significant changes at the school district level. And clearly, we are trying to do something much more ambitious and, you know, do something that, that would take effect this fall. I am committed, and I know the superintendent hears this because I have had this conversation with him recently, to finding grant funds if necessary to do that work. I've done that, as you know, on a variety of different projects in the school district because we're so resource-sarve. But I do want to make sure to Member Murawski's comment on the complexity of the issues, that we have, you know, the best minds in the civil rights and education world facilitating this work. Yes, Member Wu?
I just want to make a, a comment on the comments that were read. There is a comment from Renee Webster-Hawking in the under 10.3, which really belongs under Section 8. I, I didn't want to get it mixed up, or I wanted to get it separated from the group. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wu. I appreciate that. And thank you to all of the community members and students and allies who have used the power of their voice over the last few weeks. I also want to say, you know, in addition to the composition of the work group that I articulated this evening, when we look to bring in the best and brightest minds around this work, some of those individuals are right in our own backyard and have already reached out and want to be a resource. And so, believe me, that is, that is a consideration. This idea that if we're going to address institutional racism in SAC City, in particular when it's so deeply rooted and well documented over decades, individuals who have an understanding of the complexities of the work will be able to tackle this in a much more thoughtful expedited fashion. Okay, so with that, we're going to take a motion to adopt a tentative, oh, sorry, Superintendent, go ahead.
President Ryan, thank you for the, for the very robust discussion on this. I just wanted to tag along to Member Wu's conversation. I, I've spent some time trying to get through the 200-plus public comments. And I just want to thank the board for trying its best to balance our commitment to transparency and civic engagement from our community. But I do want to just encourage our community to spend some time on our website reviewing those comments more fully. I'm just really touched by the thoughtfulness, the, 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 the critical thinking and some of the points that are raised that do go beyond just the, the, the action- that are raised that do go beyond just the action to not renew one particular contract, but actually just unpack this issue of institutional racism much deeper than that particular action. So I'm grateful, again, to you and to our team that has, that, you know, really quickly spent time figuring out the best way to create a repository, and again, really just want to encourage our community to invest some time to better understand the overall needs that are going to have to go into really addressing this issue, given its complexity. So I look forward to continuing to read that. And as you said, there's going to be a lot of individuals that do have a great deal of expertise, given what I've read in those public comments.
Thank you, Superintendent. This is an action item. Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Superintendent.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Garcina?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
Member Ryan?
Yes.
Member Wu?
Yes.
Okay. The motion carries. Item 10.4, the revised board policy 3100, business and non-instructional operations, budget reserves, and the use of one-time funds.
Madam President, you may want to extend the meeting.
Oh, thank you.
We'll extend the meeting till 11 o'clock.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
Is that enough time?
Yes, I think that will be.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Again, this is Rose. You guys have seen this before, we brought this a couple of months back, and with all the interruption that we had with COVID-19, we were not able to bring it back as quickly as we wanted to. So it's coming back for a second reading for additional comments and any other revisions. You can please advance to the next slide. We did add one of the requests that was made at the last meeting, when it was last presented, on the economic uncertainty regarding the goal of a 5% minimum reserve. The request was to add some statement in there about, you know, what could be achievable given our situation. So a couple of ideas that were thrown out was perhaps it could be, the target could be the year 2022, 23, or after the deficit is eliminated. So that's been added there for your review. Next slide, please. And again, this is the same slide, the benefits of having this reserve above the minimum required, that it provides a buffer for the district, and it allows the district time to make adjustments to the budget thoughtfully and strategically versus just going in in the slash-and-burn mode whenever we have a sudden or an unexpected decrease to revenue or an increase in our liabilities. And the next slide is just to give you an idea, what a 2% reserve, which is our basic bare minimum, the 2% is about 11 and 1/2 million, and the 5% would be roughly about 28 million. And then we just provided some cash flow data there for you to help kind of guide this. And the next slide, then, this is the other part of the revision, the proposed revision is the use of one-time funds, that the board would take action separately on the use of one-time funds for ongoing expenses or just for one time, and this would occur at the budget adoption period of time. And then the benefits are just laid out there that, you know, just to protect the district, of course, from committing itself to ongoing expenses without any kind of exit plan or any other sustainable source. And so basically, we're just bringing it back for, again, your consideration, additional comments and questions, and until you get to the point where we're ready to take action to adopt.
Do we have any public comments on this item? Did we lose Ann?
No, no, no public comment.
Okay, thank you. Do we have board member comments? Board Member Minnick? Board Member Morowski?
Ms. Ramos, could you repeat what you said about the one-time funds? I heard you say something about us needing to approve those separately, and I didn't quite understand what you meant. I just wanted some clarity of when you were on that slide.
Sure. What that would mean, and we could just, you know, craft that any which way, but it would call out the one-time funds versus them being just buried into the budget, because, you know, our budget is quite large, and it does not necessarily itemize all of our revenue sources. It puts it into huge categories, and within those categories, we have a variety of one-time funds. Just off the top of my head, I could think of like donations, for example, mini grants that we get, and under this proposed revision to the board policy, we would list those. These are the one-time funds included in the budget, and this is what they're intended for. And in the cases of those mini grants, often they are for a one-time use. It could be a summer program or some type of initiative during the school year, and it has a known expiration date. And so, again, the goal is that that one-time fund wouldn't be used to sustain an ongoing salary without, you know, some kind of exit plan. And I do want to say that in those cases where salaries are applied to one-time funds, what districts typically do, and SAC City does that now, is that the actual posting of the job and the job description often itself has an end date that is made very clear that this is a limited-term assignment or position based on contingent upon continuing funds, but it usually ends at the end of the school year or when the funds expire.
Right. No, I, yeah, I realize that, and actually, I really appreciate this proposal to have these itemized out and have us look at them separately. Obviously, you know, we all know that part of the reason we were in some of the, you know, financial issues that we are is because of one-time money being used for ongoing expenses, and to, you know, to have to look at that and make those decisions separately will be a good, I think, reminder for us whenever there is that possibility that we could have made that mistake again. So I think that's a, that's a kind of a good way of giving us a double check to make sure that we don't go down that path again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Minnick. Board Member Morowski?
Thank you, President Ryan. I appreciate this, these proposed changes to the board policies or additions. I just had one comment, and I did send this to you and the superintendent, so I know you're aware, but just for the record, I had requested an addition to the one-time funding board policy that just specifies that a supplemental budget display be presented to the board for approval that clearly explains the source of the funds, restrictions on the funds, when it expires, just clearly how they're going to be used, and if it is ever proposed to support an ongoing expenditure, a rationale around that and how the plan to support that expenditure going forward after the expiration of the one-time funding. And just also to clarify that that one-time funds can be single-year or multi-year revenues. So, I appreciate that, and would ask that, I think that's non-controversial and clarifies or furthers the intent of the policy, so I hope that's something that the board could support when this comes back for action. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Morowski. Board Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you. I, you know, I do think that the original language needs a little bit of strengthening, and I had also shared some additional thoughts in making sure that one-time funds are for one-time expenditures. In the event that one-time funds need to be used for ongoing expenditures, that the additional level of transparency and all those details that Board Member Morowski just outlined are a very necessary step so that we can be fully informed as to what we are doing, not just ourselves, but the public as well. And also, also limiting how many times you use one-time funds for any particular program, right? If there is a program that every, every year you use a different one-time funding source to cover that ongoing program, we need to make sure that we limit how many times we do that, and revisit the bigger picture, the bigger conversation that needs to be had in terms of the viability of that program with ongoing dollars and whatnot. So I appreciate the additional level of information that we think, that I think it's important for transparency and also to strengthen the language, precisely for the reasons that Board Member Minnick mentioned. You know, the findings in the audit is, it was just common practice to use one-time funds for ongoing expenditures, and then this is part of the reason why we are where we're at. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Garcia. Do we have any other comments on this item? Okay. I just want to thank the staff for continuing to bring these items before us, consistent with the FICMAP recommendations. I know that there are myriad competing priorities, but it is critical that we adopt these board policies in the near future to safeguard us against future decision-making that is not rooted in financial best practices. So with that, this was an item that was a reading, second reading only, so we do not need to take action. We're moving on to item 11.0, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
Move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Superintendent Legal tells me this actually also has to be a roll call vote.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
Member Ryan?
Yes.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to item 11, sorry, 12.0, business and financial information reports, receive reports. Item 12.1, business and financial information. Do we have any public comments on that item?
No, no public comment.
Okay. Item 13.0, future board meeting dates and locations. Actually, this should read date still to be determined for July. We are not taking the summer hiatus as we normally do. We will have at least one board meeting in July, both because we will have revised budget numbers, but also because we will be dedicating a board meeting to our school reopening, which is so critical and time-sensitive. Item 14.0, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, all of them. Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, everyone, thank you. Have a good night and stay safe. Wear your masks. I don't know if you saw the COVID peak numbers, we all have to do our part to keep one another safe.
All right. Stay healthy, everyone.
Good night.
Night, everyone.